This conference will now be recorded.
I will ask one and thirteen, and then after everybody else comes on, I will ask fourteen at the end, because that's if you have any questions for us. And I think what I'm going to do is when we get them in here is I'll let Roberts go after me. Then the way you guys come across my screen is Irvin, Salisbury, Fleck, and Stenit. So it'll be that order, and I'll ask them.
You'll ask him.
I'll, I'll, yeah. That way, I won't get confused of who I don't ask.
We got six of them, so.
Is he ready?
Wow. I've, I got five twenty-nine, but I think we're all ready, if you guys are all ready.
I think every minute we get, there's a good thing.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Okay, so everybody is going to ask you two questions, and we'll go around the panel and ask those questions. So tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Oh, well, my name is Chalice. I moved here seven and a half, almost eight years ago, and immediately fell in love with the area. It just seems like such a wonderful, diverse group of folks who are always doing something fun and exciting, from downtown events, Halloween howl, concerts in the park, and how such a tiny little town can do so much. It's just thrilling. So I've always wanted to do more and be more, if they scoot closer. Thank you. Um, so that's kind of what brought me here, and I don't need to, but I'd love to be involved. And the more I learn about our wonderful little town, the more I fall in love with the group of folks that are here, and the more I want to help where I can. So that's what's brought me here.
Okay, so if you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
That's a great question. While both would be devastating, I think the recent pandemic has really shown that unfortunately, we can deal without a library. We do need it, yes, so it's not to undermine the need, but we really need to staff our police. So I fully believe that if we had to lay somebody off, it's going to be the library, and we'll find another way. Let's, let's work hard to get it back open. Let's figure it out. I think we need our protection.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Savage?
Yes.
My first question. You've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
Oh, I'm a people person. I love people. I love to listen. I love to communicate, and I love to solve problems. And I think that's really what I'm going to desire to bring, is the ability to communicate and to listen and to help solve problems, so that we can all be a part of the same team. We're all in this together. We've got six different applicants here tonight, and ultimately, I think we want the same thing, which is to better our community, and we all want to be involved. So.
Thank you for that answer. Uh, my second question. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces? Or rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
Oh, what's more important? I'm going to answer that with a yes. Um, I think both are equally important. Building new homes allows for the older homes to be rehammed. They're both really important. That's hard to pick just one. I think to keep the wonderful historic buildings that we have and really enhance them, I think that's really powerful. We've got some amazing historical buildings here in town. Uh, we also need new. You know, I've got friends that have kiddos that have grown up in this town and can't even get an apartment here because there's nothing for rent. So the answer to that is going to be yes. Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Two questions for you as well. Can you speak to how you maintain contact currently with the individuals residing in Ward One?
Well, I've done a little bit of a couple of different things. I've gone knocking on doors. I've done some Facebook. I'm open to it all. I, I think there's multiple ways to communicate with folks. And so what I'd like to do, if appointed, is I'd like to find out how people would like their communication, and I would follow that. Personally, I've distanced myself from virtual things, just for my own peace of mind. But if that's how folks want to communicate, by all means, let's do that. But truly, I really find that you're going to get more honesty in person, knocking on doors, talking with folks. Community involvement.
And based on, based on your knowledge of, of the residents in Ward One, how they think and operate in terms of what they believe is Cottage Grove's biggest asset, could you speak to that? And likewise, based on your knowledge of their opinions, what detracts from the livability of Cottage Grove?
I think our biggest asset are the people themselves, the fact that we're a wonderfully small town that's diverse. I hear folks talking about roads. I hear people talking about water bills, and I think those are all very, very important. The asset really, truly is the people. Folks who are able to say, this is what I want, and this is what I desire. And, and I think that needs to be honored and cherished, and let's figure out how to work together. And whether that's communication from the council's end to the residents, or finding truly what the residents desire and finding that happy medium. I think it's a balance, and I think it takes communication and tough conversations.
Thank you.
Ms. Salisbury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Chalice.
Thank you.
My first question is, do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And then the second part of the question is, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
Oh, I love our downtown so much. There's so much we couldn't prove, so it's really hard to say that it's healthy, but I think that we have amazing potential. We've got wonderful shops, incredible places to eat. I would love to see the art walks come back. Gosh, those once-a-month art walks in, in the summertime. And I've even heard folks talking about maybe shutting down the street like we do for Halloween, once a month on a Thursday, and having folks eat dinners in the streets, and businesses come out and have sidewalk sales. So I think that there's always room to grow, and that really comes again with conversation with the businesses. What do they want to do? What do they feel we are lacking? But truly, I see so much potential. There's always room to grow, though.
All right. My second question is, have you ran for a city council position for any city in the past? If yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not, and why are you applying now?
Well, like I was saying earlier, I can't help but get involved. It's just the nature of who I am as a person. And I did run this past election. I ran against Council Roberts. But I always said, I'm not running against anyone. We just happen to be going for the same seat. I love this little town, and I just would love to be involved. And that includes working with all of you folks in this capacity. So I'm, I'm driven to help. My desire is to help. Thank you.
Mr. Fleck?
Hi, Chalice. Welcome, and, and my first question is, have you read the budget, the charter, the development code?
Well, and no. Yes, I have looked it over. It was more towards the election side of things. I was just put onto the budget committee, so I'm looking forward to really diving deep and doing more. I say no because I haven't gone in for a refresher, and I'm honest about that. I did, like I said, I did dive into it when we were in the election process, and I did educate myself with where we're at. It's, it's quite the book, and there's a lot going on. So, yeah.
Thank you. So my next question, what would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next ten years? And then, as a follow-up, what suggestions would you have to meet or, and overcome these challenges?
There's two that come to mind in answering that question, and that is the roads. Our roads are tough, and I know that we work on a budget, but how do we get them fixed? That is what I hear folks complain about a lot. The other component is our water bill. And I absolutely have really appreciated the breakdowns that were given in the last couple of council meetings. I've been attending every single one, so having the, the breakdown and explanation of why our bill is the way it is was extremely helpful and helped educate myself. But I think the other flip side of that is educating the folks around us and being a little bit more transparent. So how do we resolve that? I don't know. Let's talk about it. Let's figure it out. Be a team and, and be transparent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stenit?
Yeah, hi, Chalice. My first question is, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
Well, I think that we definitely set a foundation of where things need to lie. What I mean by that is, is there's a budget, and we have to work within the parameters of the budget. The city council does not get to say, hey, we need roads done. Let's go fix these roads. All of that is already delineated. So I think it's really building the foundation, that's building on the foundation that's already, it's already worked together. It's, you're working with other, other departments. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Second question. How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
Talk to the folks. Talk to the individual constituents. Let's talk to people and find out how they want to receive their information. Not everybody's on Facebook. A lot of people are, but not everybody is. So is that going to be through the radio? Is that going to be through social media? Is that going to be through flyers? Is that going to be through communication? Is that going to be through publicizing the minutes outside of the web? I don't, I don't know. But my first desire would be to talk to the folks. How do you receive information? How do you want to receive information? Let them tell us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't, but I want to say thank you. I really appreciated going to all of the city council meetings over the last few months. I've attended every single one since I announced I was running back in July. And I just really appreciate all of the hard work that you guys do. I think there's a lot that goes unsaid, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you for the fun.
And thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Yeah, all right.
Be recorded.
Just to let you guys know, we're going to have to sanitize the table in between applicants, so it'll take a couple minutes. She's got this. In fact, I think Trudy was going to do it. Yeah. You guys hear?
Testing one, two.
You guys all hear good?
Yeah. I have a, I have a loud voice anyway, so. It does.
All right, so we're going to go around the room, and we're each going to ask you a couple of questions. And so, with that, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Let me, let me just start. My first experience with Cottage Grove was actually as a tourist several years ago. My mother came out and, from a different state, and we were looking to show her some places in Oregon, and Cottage Grove popped up with having multiple covered bridges within a short driving distance of each other. So we took her and showed her the, you know, the bridges and took some pictures. And we stopped in town. We had lunch. We stopped at one of the mini-markets on Highway ninety-nine, went inside, you know, talked with some people, drove through downtown. I think we went into Five Flying Monkeys. And, you know, it was just like a postcard. It was like living in a movie. And in the back of my head, one day I said, I want to live in a town just like this. And the opportunity came up a couple of years ago to move. We had a house built over in Sunrise Estates near Mount David. And, uh, it became a reality to live here in Cottage Grove. I remember going to, as we were checking on the construction of our house, going to the Vintage Inn, going to different restaurants in town. And every time we came here, we fell more and more in love with Cottage Grove. And, and that, coupled with the people in this community, really makes Cottage Grove a special place. And, and I think that this, you know, this town is definitely something to be treasured. I, I think the people here, the citizens of Cottage Grove are great people. The community pulls together. There's a lot of community pride. There's a lot of good spirits. And, you know, and that's good. I'm a meteorologist. I work from home. I do agriculture, weather forecasting. The oranges that you see on the shelves in your store, the majority of them come from California. I do weather forecasting for almost all of the citrus in the state, south of Sacramento. And I've been doing that for many years now. I've had my weather company for twenty years. I work from home, and, and I can, you know, go out in the field as needed. So my point is, is I'm a homebody. I work out of my home office. And I'm literally seated inside the town here, especially during the active season, the frost and freeze season, which is mid-November through mid-March, and that's my busiest time of year. I've been a meteorologist for twenty years. I started out as a student intern at the National Weather Service in the late nineteen nineties. I'm active in the community. I'm sure a lot of you see my weather posts. I like getting involved. I'm on the board of directors, on the advisory board with the Humane Society locally here. I've been on a couple of HOA boards. So I understand interacting with people and resolving problems and the business aspects of sides. So that, that's kind of myself in a nutshell.
Right. If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
I don't think that that question can be answered right now, based upon not knowing all of the, um, the budgets and proposals and, and, you know, future plans and so forth. I, I would certainly hold public safety as a higher precedence and importance than, than the library, just because I know how small the police force is and how short-staffed they are at times. So based upon that knowledge, you know, I would definitely have to lean more towards keeping the police active. That's utmost importance.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bruggeoli, my first question. You've given us some background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
Leadership, working with people, problem-solving, not shooting from the hip, researching problems and finding a, a solution. I'm a compromising person, so I would, as a city councillor, I would work with all the councillors and, when needed, compromise where it's in the best interest of both the citizens and the city itself. Liability is at the forefront of my thinking on everything I do. So the manner in which I would conduct myself, that would always be walking in front of me, so to speak, with my actions when interacting with the community and so forth. I'm a proactive type of person. I like, I'm a social person. I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty and interact with people and bring common resolutions to problems that would be presented.
Thank you. My final question. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space? Or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
Rehabbing and expanding and better utilization of our storefronts.
Okay, Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Scott.
Hi.
And to your knowledge, what do the residents of Ward One that you'd be representing believe to be Cottage Grove's greatest assets? And what aspects of the city do they believe detract from the livability of Cottage Grove?
I, I think we have the historic homes. There's a lot of historic homes within a portion of Ward One. So I think preservation is important. I think, um, there's some issues with, with crime, but I, I think that's equally across the entire city. A lot of it's just property crime, people leaving stuff on their porch, and, and opportunists taking advantage of them. So I, I think that would be an issue. There's a lot of complaints about roads. I see some complaints of infrastructure in terms of water and sewer, but I can't really address that. I, I think that there's a lot of misperception with the citizens. And, um, so that would obviously be on my list to overcome. And, uh, let me see. That's all I can think of for right now.
And how do you maintain contact with the residents of Ward One?
Well, with the modern invention, which is a double-edged sword, unfortunately, social media can go both ways. So you've got to be really careful on how you post. And I don't know if you've seen any of my weather posts, but it's, it's pretty straightforward and very engaging with the community. And, you know, don't get involved with negativity or spin things a certain way. And certainly don't interact with negative comments, or at least try to spin it into a positive light. I, I think, as a councillor, I would have a monthly coffee night and meet with concerned citizens once a month and allow them to bring some issues that they feel need to be brought to the attention of the council and make up a list, and then at the city council meeting, talk with all of you about it and bring the issues to light that are the concerns of the citizens in Ward One. I'd also interact via email or telephone or even face-to-face in person as needed. And like I said before, I'm not afraid to get out there and put my face in the public and, you know, get my feet wet in terms of meeting with people.
Thank you.
Ms. Salisbury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Scott.
Hi.
My first question is, do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And then the second part of that is, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
I think COVID has really taken a significant toll all across the country, and I think it's hit Cottage Grove particularly hard. The feedback that I've seen across the community from citizens is there's a lot of encouragement to shop local. I would certainly support that. I would engage the community. And I currently do this as well on occasion, where when my wife and I go out to restaurants, we'll take a picture of the restaurant and, you know, maybe of the food and so forth. And, and I think the more people see leadership supporting the community and, and all the stores and restaurants equally, I, I think that that could help engage the community. And if it's done right, have citizens follow in the footsteps. And that certainly would help downtown. But across America, down, a lot of downtowns, you know, are, are falling apart, unfortunately, because that's just the way it is. And Cottage Grove, I think, is positioned in a unique setup where there's a lot of tourism. So I, my, my focus would be on maintaining tourism, maintaining downtown, bringing more businesses in so that we can see maybe a ninety, ninety-five percent vacancy or a ninety, ninety-five percent filled rate within the businesses downtown. So to answer the first part of your question, I, I, I think it's a yes and no. I, I think downtown is hopping, at least Monday through Friday, as I see. And Sunday's a very slow day, of course, but that's normal. I, I think if we had more restaurants, and I think if Jack Sprats, once they open up, I think that'll bring more people downtown. Uh, we've got the mural project that's going to be coming along here pretty soon. That's going to invigorate and energize the citizens and people. It's probably going to open up the door for more tourism. I'm sure the news media will pick up on that, that it's been revitalized with the mural. If there's another mural project that's going to be going up, I think that would be good for downtown. And certainly the preservation of the, the buildings. The bank building looks beautiful, and there's businesses moving in there. So that's definitely a good thing for the downtown area. Did I answer your questions? I know I bounced around a little, so I apologize.
You did. Okay, my second question is, have you ran for a city council position for any city in the past? And if yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not, and why are you applying now?
No, I have not ran for city council in the past. I haven't lived in a small, this is the smallest town I've lived in. And this is also, like I said in the beginning, a, a unique community in that there's a lot of citizens who are vocal and involved in one fashion or another. And I think, um, I think the time was right. I, I, we're, we're, we found our forever home. We're going to retire, my wife and I are going to retire here. We're not going anywhere. We're setting our roots down, and. And, um, I, I just felt that it was time, uh, to throw my hat, especially since the position in my ward opened up. Uh, like I said, I own my own business. Um, I understand the business aspect. The city is really a business. It's a corporation. And I get that. I understand the mechanics behind that. And, uh, I, I think I can offer a lot to the table.
Mr. Fleck.
Welcome, Scott. So my first question, have you read the city budget, the charter, the development code?
I haven't.
Okay. Uh, next question is, and thank you for honesty, by the way. I appreciate that. That's, that's not something everybody does in their, uh, spare time. Um, so the next question I have, would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city? Uh, I'm sorry, what would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next ten years? And then as a follow-up, do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome those challenges?
I, I think the challenges with the city is infrastructure. I think the, uh, the biggest takeaway from what I see, the, uh, citizens, um, expressing concerns about is, uh, uh, the water system, uh, in, in again, seeing on social media, the, the water, uh, the water pipes. As new, as the city grows, as new homes come in, as new businesses go up, uh, that infrastructure is going to be stressed. Uh, there's a lot of issues with the roads. Uh, so, um, I've been poking around a little and I, you know, the way I see it, if there's one major incident in the city, this, that could bankrupt the city. So I think that it's a challenge to find ways to ensure that we have a comfortable, uh, reserve fund, uh, to overcome any, uh, of the, uh, ailments of the infrastructure and also ensure that, um, uh, the city is being proactive on, um, looking ahead down the road with, uh, the potential problems. And again, we're talking about roads, fixing potholes, uh, sometimes just pouring over, uh, blacktop on, on, you know, as a fill, doesn't resolve the problem. That could actually make the problem worse in some instances. Uh, but I'm sure public works knows exactly what they're doing and, and, and is on that. However, I, I think it's just important to keep, uh, on top of, uh, uh, the problems that's going on with the city and ensure that, um, the council is being proactive. I, 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 I think, again, I, I think the infrastructure and the roads, um, uh, absent, you know, the crime, uh, that seems to be the number one complaints of, uh, the citizens. And, and that would be, I would think, a good reflection, uh, on, on what the, uh, issues with the city are, uh, in terms of, uh, problems that need to be addressed. Uh, I'm sure there's, you know, issues with, uh, the building, maybe city hall, uh, will need a, uh, need to be remodeled at some point. Uh, so that's pretty much my answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes, thank you. Um, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, uh, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
What do you mean by fill? Are, are you, are you talking about?
I think basically what is, what is the purpose of city government in Cottage Grove and how, how should it conduct its business?
Are you talking the city council or are you talking city leadership or?
I think city government in general.
Just city government in general? Well, it's, it's a corporation. Uh, you have the council who, uh, the buck stops with the council. And, uh, the council's responsible for, uh, approving and addressing, um, uh, the city plans and, uh, I think, uh, the importance of the, the city council, you know, is certainly there. And, uh, and then we have the, the leadership. We have the city manager and director of public works, uh, engineering, planning. Uh, they maintain, uh, the day-to-day business of the city. And, uh, it's important to make sure that, um, the right people are, are in there. It appears that, uh, they probably are. And, uh, ensure that the council is getting reports, being proactive, doing the research that's needed to, uh, uh, to make the proper decisions and to address any concerns, uh, with the, uh, with the layout of the city and so forth. I mean, I, I, it's sort of a general question, so I, I don't know how technical I can get on that answer, uh, for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, second question, how do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
That's very important. It, it, it's very, very hard, especially in, in, in modern times to have, um, widespread citizen involvement and volunteerism. Uh, you know, that's on the decline. It's been on a decline for decades. And it's a huge challenge, but it's very important for the citizens to be, uh, active, uh, in, uh, the city. And I think that's where the city is running into a lot of issues with misperception. Uh, people, for example, will, and I'm, I, I know I'm using social media as a reference a lot, but that's just how the modern technology sits right now. Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of complaints and there's a lot of assumptions. And, uh, and, and the challenge is, is how can we overcome or how can the city overcome, uh, those assumptions and those misperceptions? And I think it's important to engage the community and get more people involved. And as you get more people involved, um, uh, and, and do it in a positive manner so that, uh, you know, the citizens can feel empowered that they're, uh, making a difference, even if it's just by attendance through a city council meeting. I think that, uh, you'll slowly, uh, and gradually have, uh, a spread of word of the mouth, um, and, uh, involve more citizens and, and you'll, I think you'll start to see, uh, a more positive turn, uh, and, and more community involvement, uh, with the citizens. Uh, and even the citizens taking a more proactive approach. And, uh, that should hopefully start to quell some of the misperception out there. Uh, and, um, I, 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 I just, in my opinion, I just can't underscore the importance of engaging the community and, and doing it right and in such a manner, uh, that instills community pride and, and make people happy and, and proud to, uh, uh, be a citizens, be a citizen of Cottage Grove. And I'm not saying that that's not the case, but I think that more can be done. And, um, and then the negativity can, uh, be at a very minimal instead of, uh, moderate. So, um, um, that's what I could think of right now.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't, I, I don't. I, 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 I just, I just want to say that, um, uh, I'm familiar with two of the other candidates and, uh, that's Dwayne and Jennifer. And I, I like how Dwayne, uh, participates in the, uh, in the city council and he researches the issues. Uh, Jennifer deeply cares about Cottage Grove. Uh, she's, um, uh, she's very engaged with the community. Uh, she has more direct involvement. And, um, I, I, I just hope that the, uh, that the council picks somebody who is experienced and somebody who's going to be right, uh, on the council. I think it's important. Uh, both candidates, of course, have an incredible amount of experience. Um, I've had the opportunity to very briefly talk to, to both of them. And, you know, I just want to say this, perhaps it's a, it's time to, uh, have another, uh, woman on the city council and one that's experienced with the community and, um, and is in touch with, uh, with the citizens and so forth. So, so that's what I would like to say.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
That's what you do all the time, huh? You know, by the way, I've been noticing a lot of, uh, traffic stops lately going on. Thank you for that. Well, yeah, it's been great. It's been good to see.
So we're running behind, but that's okay, because we'll just start the meeting late if we run over. So, um, we're all going to go around the room and ask, or the panel, because not everybody's in here, ask two questions each and, um, we'll just go with that. Um, so first question is, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Hi, my name is Dwayne Taddy. Uh, lived here in Cottage Grove since two thousand and two, inside the city limits. Um, bought a beautiful house, old house on the corner of Main and R. Um, I'm forty-four years old. Uh, married to my high school sweetheart, uh, Birdella, who drives school bus here in town. Um, I have two children. One is, uh, nineteen, almost twenty, in the United States Navy in Guam. Another is my daughter, fifteen years old, who, uh, goes to school here in town. Um, let's see, well, I, a lot of community involvement since I've, uh, been here in town. Most recently, I, uh, assisted with the Cottage Grove Carousel, Friends of the Carousel, with their Facebook page, their first website, and also rebuilding the main infrastructure of the carousel and seeing it move from the WE Fair over to the winery where it sits now. Uh, prior to that, I have, uh, volunteered with the graffiti rapid removal team under Marie Longfellow. I have also, uh, participated in multiple food drives with community sharing and South Lane School District and South Lane Fire Department, bringing in over a thousand pounds of food for three consecutive years in a row. Yeah, that's, that's, uh, about it unless you have any more specific questions.
If you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
That's a question that's been asked before. And no matter which way you answer that question, um, you're not going to make everybody happy. Um, that's a tough one. I think, make it partisan, conservatives like to, would rather keep the cops and, and liberals would rather keep the library. I can't answer that question, um, at this point. Uh, you'd have to look at funding. And I think those two resources in this community are very important resources. And I personally, to answer that question, would consider moving money from another source to keep both of those, uh, funded.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. Mr. Caddy, you've given us some of your background and your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths you can bring to this council?
Well, just general interest in, in the community, um, I naturally have a desire to find all the information on things that interest me. Um, that'd be my greatest strength is getting all of the information before I form a decision. I have a lot of experience with computers and, uh, researching people and things, so, and it, it just interests me in general.
Okay. Uh, my second question, what's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing, expanding and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
My opinion, and I have no knowledge of what it costs to build new building versus rehabbing old buildings, um, that's a tough one to question, to answer, counselor, because it's two, two different things. Um, I think we need to focus on building new affordable homes, uh, for moderately incumbent folks, low to moderate income. And maybe both of them are important. We've got to rehab what we've got, because if we don't rehab what we've got, then it's just going to get distressed and we're going to lose it. We're going to lose the historic homes, the historic downtown businesses. But at the same time, we have to invest in the business park and, and build new. So I can't really tell you which one's more important. They're, they're both. I can't say they're both equally important, but they're, they both are important, depending on how you speak with, speak to.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Mr. Taddy.
Hello, Counselor.
To your knowledge, what do the residents of Ward One believe to be Cottage Grove's greatest asset? And what aspects of the city do they believe detract from its livability?
Mount David would be one of the, uh, things that Ward One residents care about, uh, the most, I think, especially on the north side of Ward One. On the south side of Ward One, uh, southwest side would be our street expressway, as we call it. Uh, very few people knew when they bought their homes there. And more are finding out that the long-term plan for that road is to actually be an artery to run traffic outside of, uh, historic downtown. And so that's important to them, especially the speed of cars, the schools on that road. Um, and then I think the Mount David issue for the, for the folks on the south side. I'm sorry, on the north side.
And how do you maintain contact with the residents of Ward One?
At this, at this time, I don't. Um, I do have a few friends that live in that area and, and I stay in contact with them via telephone, text and Facebook. Uh, I like the Facebook idea. I have a lot of experience with Facebook. Um, I know there are better ways to do it on Facebook than are being done now. Um, I'm, I have access to email. I, I would assume that I would do phone calls, uh, email and Facebook. And, and the thing with the phone calls is I do have a lot of free time when I'm away from home for work, sitting in a hotel and my phone is always on. Being a, uh, a Teamster, union leader, uh, I, I field calls all the time. So that, those would be the three ways, I think, email, phone calls. Let's make it four, uh, emails, phone calls, text and, uh, Facebook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Solzby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Dwayne.
Hello, Counselor.
Do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And the second part of that is, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
I'm going to sound, it's going to sound bad, but the answer is no to your first question. Successful and healthy. No, and I think I, I, uh, many would, would agree with me. Um, what do we do? Um, well, you know, I've, I've looked through that downtown refinement plan. And I, I coined it, I remember coming into a city council meeting and coining it, the, the, the downtown redefinition plan. And I'll tell you that I think people come here, I think we can attract people off I five by keeping it the way it is. I don't know. I don't know that I can answer that question. Uh, we have to go down to the local business owners, the local building owners and find out what they need. Uh, what can they, how much can they afford to rent these spaces out for? How, how does this, how do they go out and work with the Chamber of Commerce to try to sell the, sell the space so that people come here? It's beautiful in the springtime and the fall to, to walk that area, but I know that doesn't bring money into the businesses. We need people to actually go into the businesses. We do the Halloween deal, people come down for the candy, but how do we get them into the businesses? So, so, yeah. So, so yeah, no, it's, it's not healthy and it's not successful. And that was even, I, I'll be honest, pre-COVID, my answer would be the same, pre-COVID. Maybe with COVID happening, maybe we can have a, a major reset and try to find out how, how does Bend, Oregon, get all those people to, to, to come out there and, and, and spend all their money and their time out there? We're right off I-5. It should be real simple, but I, I don't know. I, I'm, I tell you what, I am willing to, to, to sit down with those people, even though they're not in Ward One, and try to work towards a solution.
Thank you. Have you, have you ran for city council position for any city in the past? And if yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not and why are you applying now?
So, the answer's no. And forgive me for bringing my notes up because it's kind of, kind of hits me kind of hard. I'll tell you, I'll, I'll answer that for you. The answer is, is no. I, I did move to Cottage Grove in, in 2002. I'm forty-four years old, so I've been here since I was in my twenties and I didn't, you know, obviously I, I wasn't here that long in my twenties. So, and I had other things going on, I had a family. So, I will tell you that now, councillor, my family supports me doing this. In the past, they hadn't. I was raising a son who had ADHD or was diagnosed with ADHD. Wife was staying at home, so I felt like I needed to spend time there. Spent a lot of time in the garden, but I'll tell you that my son's in the Navy now. So, there's the father and son things that fathers and sons do aren't happening now, other than a phone call here and there when we can talk. My daughter, you know, my daughter is real interested in politics now. She asks questions like, why is it done this way? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? My wife, she actually listens and, and participates in conversation. My, my dad, and this is why I opened my notes here to focus on something. My, my mother died, she passed away in July of last year and she was a fighter. She told me not to give up on what I believe in. And my dad comes over for dinner every, every night and, and we watch city council meetings together. Everyone this year, we've watched together. He retired last year and they all said, go do it. So, that's why I'm doing it now. I know every single one of you know that I've had an interest in this city and I always dig deep to, to come up with questions. And so, that's, that's why I'm doing it now. And that's why I haven't done it in the past. Thanks for asking the question.
Mr. Fleck.
Dwayne, welcome.
Welcome.
My first question.
Nice haircut, councillor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So, my, my first question, have you read the budget, the charter, the development code?
Yeah, I was actually just looking at the development code today, talking to a, a resident up on Mount David, trying to figure out how that two and a half story house is being built up there next to that single story on its, on, on the right side of it and the two-story on the left. So, yeah, I, I read the development code. It talks about every foot you go higher, you got to have a extra foot of, of, of a distance. And there's some variances there, but anyways, yeah. So, as far as the budget, yeah, I served on the budget committee for three consecutive years. I was appointed in twenty seventeen, eighteen. And then I sat on the budget committee as a vice chair, twenty eighteen, nineteen. And I sat on the budget committee as the chair for nineteen, twenty. So, yeah, I've read the budget. I've, I've actually dove into the budgets even more after I got off the budget committee. It's a three-year term. And, yeah, and then the charter, I've looked at the charter. I've also dove into, deep into the city's website, looked at the franchise agreements between the city and the utilities. I've looked at the, the, the nuisance codes, eight dot twelve chapter and all that, yeah. I know, I, and stuff that I haven't read, I know where to find it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, my next question is kind of a two-parter. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next ten years? And then what suggestions would you have for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges?
Oh, gosh, I think I answered a question similar to that on my application. I thought it was roads. I thought it was roads up until about two weeks ago. Then I learned that it's actually the sewer system. When I heard about a FCS group, a consultant recommending a twelve percent increase for three consecutive years in a row, or else we, with the statement added that as early as fiscal year 2022, that we won't have enough money to fulfill, fulfill our debt obligations. I, I, I really realized that it was the wastewater. And then, of course, listening to the former councillor Jake Boone from Ward, Ward One, that, that disposition would fill. He was talking about the different diseases that are associated with your sewer backing up and spilling on the ground. So, that's serious, but roads, roads are, are a big deal. I would say number two, and then crime, crime, and then you can put homeless in with that. I hear a lot of people associating crime with homelessness, even though I don't quite necessarily agree that, that, that's true. But, so crime, homelessness, and, and then there's all the other ones that talk about fire department and, and education. I mean, there's, and, and those don't, those are not city things. That's South Lane School District and South Lane Fire. But, yeah, I, I would say that would be the order, sewer, roads, crime. And how do you deal with it? We got to find the money to pay for it. We got to look at, are the residents paying their fair share? FCS group says the residents are paying more than their fair share, businesses are not paying enough. Like I said earlier, we can look at moving money around. Are we spending money on things that we, that we don't necessarily need? As opposed to things that, that the city, that, that we do need, like our infrastructure, roads, sewer, policing? So, that would be the answer is, is we just need to, we need to find the money. I, I heard you, all you folks talking last week about selling ideas to people and I, that kind of turned me off. When I hear that my government is trying to sell me something, I don't want to buy it. If you got to come to my house to sell me books, I probably don't need them. And when the councillors are trying to sell me a gas tax, or trying to sell me something, I, I'm thinking, I don't want to do it. So, it's got to be other ways. Put the horse before the cart kind of thing. I'm willing to sit down and talk with you guys about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes, hi, Dwayne.
Hello, councillor.
First question, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
That was a question that I, that I spent some time writing some answers to today. I figured that would come up. I'm not good with big words. I'm just a, a working man. But I would say the role the city government should play is, is that they're responsible for the services and the infrastructure that we already have in place first. And then, of course, anything that, that needs to be built to grow our city. And I'm, I'm for natural growth and I understand that natural growth means you have to expand things. Yeah, delivery, delivery and, and, and maintenance of its current infrastructure. That's the most important.
Thank you. How do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
That right up there on the screen is the first. It's my understanding that this go-to-meeting stuff costs us about a hundred and eighty dollars a year. We've already invested in the cameras. I, I'm not sure if we rent them or lease them or own them. I hope to find out. We've got the, we've got the, the cameras and the microphones and, and the means to do it. So, we keep doing this. Again, Facebook, YouTube, I know the city of Cresswell hosts their council meetings live on YouTube and then they're available to watch later. Biggest one is transparency. Not surprising them with things like this sewer system thing and not, it's not surprising them with, with twelve percent increases. I know you can't see my face because I have a mask on, but that, that really bothers people when they, they hear some numbers like that. And then, of course, you know, Mayor does a good job with, with the, with the online City Hall Day. I forget what that was called that you did, where you came down and sat in here for a couple hours. No, it was, it was in January, I think, or February, it was City Hall Day. And, and just getting people involved. People, I'm sorry, that's not the word I was looking for. Get people interested in coming down here. Get people interested on going online to see what we're all about. But really, this, this right here is number one, is making it easily accessible.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
All right, well, thank you for applying.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Right back on track. We're behind still. Okay. So, can Richard control her to put her, because we're going to have her screen up, correct?
She's online and, and, and you can talk to her. It doesn't look like she has a screen. There she is, she's up there.
So, since they're cleaning, we'll go ahead and get started. So, thank you for applying and we're going to go around the panel and ask you questions. So, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
I'm Jennifer Crosby. I am co-president of Pay It Forward Cottage Grove alongside my mother. I also run the community Facebook page, what's going on in Cottage Grove and talk to community members daily. I was born and raised here, my, been here my entire life. I have two sweet little kids and we live over on South M Street.
Okay, so next question I have is if you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
That's extremely difficult because in the given times during a pandemic, we do need the library open and those activities for kids. So, unfortunately, I would have to temporarily close it, maybe move it to more online so that we can adjust that way. They're not just completely cut off from reading and those activities. We do need our police force no matter what, so I would have to go with that.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Ms. Crosby, here we go. My first question, you've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
I've been thinking about this a lot over the past couple of years. When I was going to run a couple of years ago and I chose not to because of family issues, but I have a really deep connection with the community. It may just, some bits online and social media. I talk with community members daily on what they have issues and their concerns are. And I would like to be able to bring that to the table and so that we all can discuss it and see what the community wants and needs and they could be more filled in on our council meetings.
Thank you. My second question, what's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing, expanding and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
So, that's a really tough question because we need both of those options. We do need more housing here in Cottage Grove that's affordable, but we also have buildings that need worked on and fixed up, just like how the bank building was done beautifully. So, that's a really tough one to pick. I would have to choose both of those and pick little things from each.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Jennifer. What do you believe to be the residents of Ward One's greatest asset or belief about Cottage Grove's greatest asset? And conversely, what do you think that they believe detracts from the livability of the city?
So, we have a few issues over here that I do see regularly posted and people message me even thinking that I am a volunteer here. And is the parks being overrun by either homeless people or kids or people using drugs and stuff like that? And the speeding down Main Street going west to Art Street there, I see a lot of complaints about that as well over in this area. Not so much on roads really, just mainly those two things so far. But I would love to find out more and see what other things that we can fix for them.
And I might have jumbled the first part of that question, but what do you believe, understand they believe to be the greatest asset of Cottage Grove?
Oh, in Ward One over here? You know, there is a lot of little things that we do have over here. We have Prospector Park and Silk Creek. Let's see, we have awesome community members over here and let's see, I think, yeah, that's about it.
And how do you maintain, currently maintain contact with residents of Ward One?
Currently, I do, I know a lot of my community members and neighbors. I talk to quite a few regularly too and through Facebook, when we're walking down the street or I will get stopped by just driving by and whatnot. I talk to them quite a bit and I would love to talk with them more and see what their concerns are about over here.
Thank you.
Ms. Solzby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jennifer. My first question for you is do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And the second part of that is what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
So, I do think we have a pretty awesome downtown, the way that it is laid out. And there is so many people that have ideas that I think that we could use and try to come together. We have a beautiful downtown, the historic part of it. I think that we could do a few things I've seen people ask about and want to, you know, improve it a little more. And I would love to put their ideas on the table and talk about what we could do to improve it a little better for everybody and tourists.
Great. My second question is have you ran for a city council position for any city in the past? If yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not and why are you applying now?
I have not ran for any other council and I've only lived here. I am very involved in the community. I have volunteered from community sharing when I was a teenager up to starting my own nonprofit of Pay It Forward. And I talk with community members daily and I would love to be their voice and bring that into the council chambers and see what we all can achieve together.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleck.
All right, my mouse was giving me troubles for a second there. Welcome, Jennifer. So, my first question, have you had a chance to read the city budget, the charter, the development code?
I have not read that.
Thank you. And my second question is kind of a two-parter. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next ten years? And what suggestions would you have to overcome these challenges?
So, what, the number one thing that I'm noticing a lot lately is housing, affordable housing. That is something that I think that we could definitely improve and talk to maybe some investors on. That is, people in the community can't afford, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month for a house. And so, that is one thing that I have seen that everybody would love to see more of is affordable housing so that they can live around here and stay here in Cottage Grove.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes, thank you. First question, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
We should, as councillors or any other part, we should be the community's voice. This is why we have different wards of representation so that we can figure out what their problems are and what they have issues with so that we can all come together and put it on the table for everyone.
Thank you. Next question, how do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
That's also another tough one. I think that we could definitely advertise it more so that we can get, you know, a breakdown of what's going on in the council meetings and post it on groups and online. I don't think a lot of people have tons of interest because it's not put as a way that they, it will grab their attention. So, I would love it if more people would be more involved in it and I think that they should be. So, it would be a lot more helpful, a lot less, you know, complaining and whatnot so that they can put their ideas in front of you guys so that they can try to fix it.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't.
Well, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Sorry, we're running behind, but just the way it's gonna go tonight. So tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
All right. My name is Don Russ. Do you want my address?
No.
Okay. I started in business, yeah, right out of high school in the beer business and became general manager of a beer distributor here in Plain County. Then moved to Dallas, Texas and stayed there until I retired. I've got law enforcement background. I've been on quite a few boards through my years. And I'm pretty good with budgets.
All right. So if you had to choose between closing the library and laying off two police officers, what would you do?
Well, the library's closed. Am I correct? Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I'd close the library. Keep it closed.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
My first question. You've given us some of your background in your application and then this discussion. What do you feel are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
I think my biggest strength would just be the experience of being on different boards. Everything from TV, public TV stations to traffic safety the airport board. I was on the library board. So I think I've got a well-rounded ability to be able to put things together and work with people and try to get an end result.
Thank you. My second question. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space? Or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
Okay, I'm gonna walk down the middle of the road on that one. I think you can have both. I don't think it has to be either or. I would like to see more of the storefronts downtown revitalized. Not to new facades, but cleaned up to the way they were originally. Thank you. Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. My first question is what are the residents of Ward One believed to be Cottage Grove's greatest assets? And conversely, what aspects of the city do they believe to detract from the livability of Cottage Grove?
I think number one in my ward would be the lack of crime. This is a safe city. It's got a great school district and I think that's why we're getting some of these houses built in Ward One. People coming from a little bit bigger city that aren't happy with the school district.
And then things that detract from livability?
COVID right now. I think there are some issues maybe with trash that we may look at, you know, discuss as far as ordinances. You know, clean up the neighborhoods.
And how do you maintain contact with the citizens residing in Ward One?
Well, I think one of the best things to do is feed them. I've gone through a couple of different times when what we would do is just have hot dog dinners and invite everybody in the neighborhood to come. And you get a lot of good information for a $300 investment.
Thank you.
Ms. Solzby.
Hi, Don. Welcome.
Thank you.
My first question is, do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And the second part of that question is, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
I am gonna say no to the first question. I think COVID has affected downtown. I also think vacant buildings need to be filled. And we need to figure out how we can motivate people to come to our city or people that are in our city to invest in ideas and get these different buildings filled. And I'm sorry, what was the second?
Well, you you kind of answered it. What suggestions would you would you make to increase its vitality? So
I think I think taking care of some of the storefronts and updating them, just cleaning them up and it seems like we've really do well with restaurants and brew houses. Maybe that's a trend that we need to look at. Maybe maybe it's not clothing stores or, you know, the regular things that we think of when we think of filling in downtown.
Great. My second question is, have you ran for a city council position for any city in the past? If yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not and why are you applying now?
No, I have never run for a city position. I've run for county sheriff in Texas. And that pretty much took most of my time. I didn't feel that I needed to be in the city.
Mr. Fleck.
Okay, Don, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, my first question is, have you had a chance to read the city budgets, the charter, the development code?
I have, but it was two years ago on the charter on my first term on the budget committee. I have not read it or updated myself on that information. I apologize for that.
No, no worries. Thank you. So next question's kind of a two-parter. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next 10 years? And then the second part, do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges?
Well, I think some of our challenge is just not gonna be another Eugene. We're very, very close to Eugene and I've seen a lot of people looking at property down here from Eugene. I think we need to keep our historic feel. I think it works for this city. It worked for the city back in the 70s when I had a beer route down here. And I think it's gonna work in 20 years. We just need to upgrade it a bit after we get rid of COVID.
Mr. Stenick.
Yes, thank you. The first question, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
Public safety, utility. We always have to take care of the indigent. I know that's a big, huge gambit I just said in those three things. But those would be the three majors.
Thank you. Second question, how do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure it meets their needs and expectations?
You know, I think you've already started. I think you've already started it with the internet. I've got to be honest, it's a great. I watched it a couple Mondays ago. And I think it's a wonderful tool. We just need to get people to do it to watch it. They can sit at home and watch us. Okay, is there more to the question?
No.
Okay.
So do you have any questions for us?
No, sir. I appreciate the opportunity. And whoever gets it, I'm gonna support him. So that's I'm just glad so many people put in for it.
All right. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Richard, Billy Reed on online?
Yes, he is. And we just sent him a request to come on live and and unmute himself. So Billy, if you're there, hopefully you can hear us.
Yeah, is this my own?
Yes.
Is the video going?
Okay, so tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
I'm Billy Reed. I've lived in Cottage Grove for since 2007. I bought a home in 2007, which was not financially the best time to buy a home, but I've stuck here and I love this town. I work for many marginalized communities currently. I'm doing street outreach towards at-risk and marginalized youth here in Cottage Grove. Through Looking Glass Corporation, I've worked for them for a little over a year. I've worked for St. Vincent de Paul as well, and I've done volunteer work with Special Olympics as well as many fundraising events around town that I've been able to help out with.
Okay, so my second question is, if you had to choose between closing the library or laying off two police officers, what would you do?
The bookworm in me says that I want the library to stay open. The, you know, the public-minded person wants the police officer. Honestly, I think that the services offered by a library should be so much that they could offer more for a town's future than two police officers, but I do understand and recognize and respect the need for the town to have these safety officers in place.
Okay, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Billy Reed.
Evening, sir.
All right, my first question. You've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to the council?
I bring the ability to communicate in a concise and open manner. I bring an open mind. And I bring the desire to want to help out this town that I've, you know, grown to love and adore and work and live in and love in so much. And I'd like to continue in that fashion to contribute even more.
Thank you, Billy. My second question. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts?
Great council, great question, Councilman. I live in a house that was built in 1898, so I've got a bit of a soft spot for the older houses in town. And I've seen some really beautiful, successful rehab projects done on houses in this town. And I think that a lot of the charm comes from for this town comes from its historic nature and the fact that people drive and they look at the houses and they look at the, you know, the awesome downtown area and I understand that there is obviously a great need for new housing and affordable housing. But of the two, I'd say that rather than leaving houses to be scabs for out-of-towners and potential, you know, buyers of property in town, if we could fix up what we have here a little bit and then go forward and maybe, you know, work on new infrastructure after that.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin.
Thank you and welcome, Billy.
Thank you, Irvin.
What are the residents of Ward One believed to be Cottage Grove's greatest assets? And what aspects of the city do they believe detract from its livability?
Not to be redundant again, but a lot of the neighborhood or a lot of the houses in my neighborhood are very close to Mount David. So we've got a lot of the historic homes in there and as well as we've heard somebody else saying there's great schools in the neighborhood as well, but I think what a lot of people take pride on, and that's in any part of this town, is just the small-town you know, feel, but with sort of big-town amenities. And I think that goes for all wards, but you know, I live in Ward One.
And as to what detracts from the livability?
I think that there I hear complaints about, obviously, there are situations of crime, situation of you know, homelessness, which is something that I work with closely and I think I have a unique perspective upon. But the people really, I think, safety is a big issue for people and people having their personal belongings and their livelihoods feeling safe around their family and loved ones that they live with. I think that they feel that is not necessarily being taken care of right now, that the that the crime rate is a little high. I hear, of course, the people talking about the zooming down the streets as well and I think that happens probably all over town as well and I used to hear it a lot, but again, not so much anymore is the the condition of the streets in the area and things like that. But I don't hear that as much as I think it used to be more of a hot-button subject. But those are all things that people definitely like. I've heard that be talked about like as a, I wish we could fix this.
And how do you maintain contact with residents residing in Ward One?
Honestly, I've got friends that live here, which is one thing, but with just like general contact, it's more of a neighbor, you know, wave to the guy, borrow a tool or something. There's always, you know, the chitter-chatter across the street, but I think that what I do in this town, I'm always going for walks. I'm trying to lose the COVID weight that I put on. So I'm I'm hitting the pavement pretty hard these days and I'd like to think that if I was more of a known person in the area that people would stop me or walk with me even better and, you know, we could shoot the breeze for the 10 or 20 minutes that I have on my breaks at work. So I'd love to be more available, I guess, is what I'm saying. But I am available.
Ms. Solzby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Billy.
Hello.
Do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? Yes or no? And the second part of that is, what suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
I do think downtown is healthy and vibrant. I see new storefronts being put in, which I think is a great thing. There's the new bank building, which looks awesome. I had Bartolotti's Pizza on Saturday. It's so great. There's Big Stuff is reopening next week. Jack Sprats is reopening next week. The there's that little, you know, in-between the jewelry store and the rural outreach program. I think that I'd love to see that space filled eventually. But I think that we've got a healthy downtown and I love walking down the streets of downtown. People come and I see them taking pictures of our murals and, you know, going for a beer at the brew pub or, you know, they're just checking out the town and it's cute and quaint and fun and old and quirky and I think it is vibrant and successful. And what was the second part? Sorry.
No problem.
Remember when I said I'm concise? Let's take that away.
What suggestions would you make to help increase its vitality?
Well, I think that we're on the way to increasing it just by restaurants reopening, honestly, and COVID finally beginning to plateau a little bit and people leaving the house again and people spending money again and people going back to work and making money again are all things that can contribute to the success. And I think we start having our chili cook-offs again and our parades and we start having our chili cook-offs again and our parades and we're just, it's only gonna get better from here, so. I think that we're on the right road. We just need to keep going down it.
Great. Alright, have you ran for a city council position for any city in the past? If yes, where and what drives you to apply again? If no, why not and why are you applying now?
I have not ran for any sort of city office before. Um, I think now is, it feels like the right time for me. I finally get to work back in Cottage Grove again, so like I said, I'm living here, working here, shopping here, doing everything here, and when Jake stepped down, something about it just spoke to me and I thought, you know what? Jake's my neighbor, maybe I could not necessarily pick up where he left off, but, you know, do something for this neighborhood myself.
Mr. Fleck?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, so my first question, have you read the city budget, the charter, the development code?
I have not. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. So my next question is kind of a two-parter. What would you consider the most important issues that pose a challenge to the city currently and over the next ten years? And then the follow-up to that is, do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges?
Wow, that's a, it's a lot. Uh, I think the challenges we face right now are the same as any town our size, but with a growing, growing uh population is that are we ready for any sort of population, not necessarily explosion, but, you know, even just a minor boom, maybe a pop instead? And how will we deal with uh, with more people and potentially less resources? And it sounds like obviously the plumbing is an issue that people are going to be dealing with, you know, for the next foreseeable future, it sounds like, and as a homeowner and, you know, as someone who would love to see other homeowners come to the area, I would really like to just be part of that discussion and figure out what we all could do to make any of these infrastructure issues better and more attractive to potential, you know, new residents of this town.
Thank you.
Mr. Stenning?
Thank you. Um, my first question, what roles do you think city government should fill in Cottage Grove?
Um, I think that uh city government in any town should just be a good sounding board for the people. I think Jennifer mentioned and alluded to something like that, and I just found myself saying like, yeah, that's one hundred percent how I feel as well. I think that it's the responsibility of city government to also be transparent to their constituents and go forward with the best interest of the people and the population of Cottage Grove with the best of our ability. Obviously, not everyone's going to be happy all the time and that's just isn't gonna happen, but to be completely transparent and let them know why they're not happy, I think is important. I don't know if that answered the question or not.
It did, thank you. Uh, second question, how do we get more citizens of Cottage Grove involved in their government to ensure that it meets their needs and expectations?
I think, again, this is gonna sound like an echo from earlier people, but right now, we're in the time of everybody's working from home and people are so used to Zoom meetings, you know, I've done probably a hundred Zoom meetings in the past year, and everybody's so used to the new way of communication that this is easily available right here. I had to log on. It's been two minutes and I didn't even have the app yet on my iPad, and I put it on and I logged in and I watched the meeting and I can hear you guys all great. Um, I'm sure that you guys can hear me great. Everybody's looking great, you know, like it's, this is the future, and I think if more people realize that it was this easy to access, and it is something that they were indeed interested in accessing, uh, then there might be more viewership and involvement from, you know, Joe Sixpack or whatever.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Okay, well, thank you for applying.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Wow, that's pretty good. So I have seven oh three on my computer, so we will, if everybody's okay with it, we'll just jump right into the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would like to, if anybody does want to activate their cameras now, they can do that, um, and everyone is muted, so if they do want to participate in the further part of the meeting, then they will need to unmute when you call on them for um or at the appropriate times during the council meeting.
Okay. So we will go ahead and call, what?
Okay.
Oh, not yet, sorry. There you go.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Council Roberts?
Here.
Council Stenning?
Here.
Your representative? Council Fleck?
Here.
Council Salisbury?
Here.
Council Irvin?
Here.
Here, gentlemen.
Here. So there are no items to be added to the agenda. It brings us to item four, appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter for scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken to prior, prior to council's discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments at this time. However, the council may take the comments under advisement for discussion and action at a further council meeting. Does anybody wish to speak? Since I'm not seeing anybody, we will move on. Item five, there is no public hearings. Item six, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to item seven, there is no resolution or ordinances, so it brings us to item eight, visits from the city council. Item A is Ward One, position, city council appointment, Mr. Myers.
Um, you have conducted the interviews, um, and now it's time for the council to um discuss, decide, and nominate someone for, to fill the Ward One council vacancy. You have six applicants, all of them um qualified under the code as electors, living in the city for more than a year um and breathing. Um, and those are basically the requirements, but you have had your fifteen minutes for each one or more for questions, and so it's now time for your deliberation and decision.
I'd just like to say that was a tough panel to decide from because we had six really good candidates and uh I'm, I'm open for discussion with the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion we appoint Dwayne Taddy to the uh position based on his experience of three years of the Budget Committee and community involvement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Seeing none, is there more discussion? Mr. Fleck?
So, you know, first of all, I want to say, all of the, the applicant, you know, bring some talents to the, the, you know, uh, possible appointment, and I want to thank everybody for uh, you know, taking the time to come out, answer our questions, you know, share themselves with, excuse me, share themselves with us, you know, and I wrote down some notes, um, you know, just brief little things about each candidate, and like I said, all, all the folks had some strengths, but when it comes to me, you know, I, I have a, when I first decided to get interested in city government, I spent three years going to meetings in those god-awful orange chairs that Richard remembers from the council chambers, and I applied for budgets and I applied for planning commission. I spent, you know, a couple of years on the planning commission, uh, then ran for council, um, you know, so I really appreciate people who take the time, you know, to learn about government, uh, especially our government and, and why we do things um so that they can become informed when they uh, you know, ultimately run for that. Um, you know, hence my question about folks reading the charter, the budget, um, you know, development code, and while those aren't make-or-break issues, you know, they certainly weigh on, you know, whether or not I can support somebody for that. You know, the other, you know, big thing here is, you know, have they put the time in, you know, to running for office? Um, and I guess that's where I'm at. Uh, I think that my first choice at this point is Chalice Savage. She, you know, she's taken the time to run for office. She's applied for budget. Um, she's read a lot of the stuff that we've done. You know, not that others haven't, you know, um, but I'm also kind of looking at who is gonna be the best fit for the council. Um, you know, I do want a diverse board. Uh, I do think that getting opinions from all segments of society is really critical. Um, and I, and I do think that uh, while I would never vote just because somebody represented a certain, you know, uh, gender or position necessarily, I do think that that adds to the value of the council. Uh, so with that, that would be my first choice at this point. I, rather than make a motion, I think I'd rather have some discussion with the council, um, because I think there are other strong candidates, and I think rather than just having to say, you know, uh, who gets the most votes right off the bat, I think let's have a discussion about what we're looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I circled a few, and once I do agree, I really appreciate having a number of people get involved here, come, apply, um, that the word was spread throughout uh town as best as we could with the relatively short amount of time uh to come to this point, um, and so thank you for everybody that came and applied and filled out the questionnaires and thought about the process, and uh just a general takeaway is that um, people love this town. They want to see the best for it, um, and for me, it comes down to who can be the most effective uh in this particular role as a council member, and so I do weigh pretty heavily uh the the ability to connect to the, to the residents of the ward and, and to Cottage Grove in general. The understanding of the mechanics of um how the city works, what decisions can be made, how the, how the budgets operate, um, and I think that goes to dispelling decisions based on emotion uh and misconception, and, and I think that's necessary for the uh smooth functioning of government. Um, you know, government doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be smooth, but if everything is in order and um there's no funny business going on, then it can be smooth uh if, if everyone can allow for that. Um, and so Charles stood out to me, uh, and Dawn stood out to me, and probably between the two uh of those, um, considering the efforts already put in place of my Chalice and um and running in the previous election and showing that, I would, I would probably favor Chalice uh as number one for my pick.
Ms. Salisbury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Councilor Fleck and Councilor Irvin. Um, I do put some merit into the fact that Chalice put a lot of effort into running, and uh she is qualified, definitely qualified, and she's gotten even more involved with different boards since she ran, which speaks volumes on her and her involvement, doesn't miss a city council meeting, and I respect that a lot. Um, with that being said, Dawn Rust definitely was leading the pack as well. He is more than qualified. He's all-around great for the council, but I would have to say that Chalice would be my pick as well.
Any more comments, discussion? Mr. Carl?
Okay, you know, I, I'm new to this community. I've been up here for over a year.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Carl Richard, one-one-one-five South Eighth Street, here in Cottage Grove. And I, I've listened to everything that's going on here, and I took a lot of notes as I'm going through and listening. Dwayne is the one that I wrote down that would be the one that would actually support the people and be there for the people, and I would support him. I'm not in his, in his ward, but if I was, I would vote for him hands down. I feel he's for the people and he cares about the people.
Thank you. See anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Dwayne Taddy, eighteen oh three West Main Street, Cottage Grove, Oregon. Just for the record, I do not know Carl. I met Carl on the site of the uh Ethan Taylor Project. I went out there to look at the mess that they made at Ethan Taylor. Carl and a few other uh of the constituents of this city council that is sitting here now was out there, and we spoke for some thirty minutes. I know your name is Carl. I don't know your last name. I wasn't listening to that, but thank you for your support. Again, I don't know him. I met him the other day.
Thanks. Anyone else? Do we get a motion at all? Again, Mr. Fleck?
So I'll move that we appoint Chalice Savage to the open Ward One seat.
Second.
I have a motion with a second. Is there any just more discussion? Any other comments?
Mayor, you do need to state that the previous motion failed for lack of second.
Okay, so the previous motion for Mr. Taddy failed for lack of second. We have a current one for Chalice with a second. So with that, Mr. Carl?
Does it have to be somebody of the council to actually second that for Taddy?
Yes, it does, sir.
Okay, just a question, sorry.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it passes, so we're gonna swear Chalice in right now, correct? Where is she gonna sit then when we're?
Where?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I am Chalice for five days.
I am Chalice Savage.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
As City Council of the City of Cottage Grove.
Of City Council.
The City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Cottage Grove. A municipal corporation.
A municipal corporation.
To defend the private economy. And will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
Unlawfully United States of America and laws of the United States. The State of Oregon, San Diego, the City of Cottage Grove. Will faithfully perform the duties of our. And will faithfully perform the duties.
Okay, it brings us now to item B, the appointment of municipal court Judge Pro Tem. And Mr. Fisher is not here, correct?
Right.
Okay, so Mr. Myers?
So you have a memo from the municipal court judge, Martin Fisher. He is asking for approval of an additional Judge Pro Tem. He currently has one and I can't remember her name now all of a sudden. But, and during the earlier, well, late last year in November, December, he needed to use his Pro Tem, but he wasn't able to get in touch with her and get schedules squared away. And so he'd like to have a second Pro Tem set up and approved by the city council. He has submitted Jesse London. Jesse has previously assisted with prosecution in Cottage Grove on our municipal court. He currently serves as a Judge Pro Tem in Veneta. He's a prosecutor in Coburg and he also is a prosecutor in Florence. And so he's got experience. He actually filled in for our city prosecutor a number of times, or was the backup for John when, when John was here as our prosecutor. So he has experience in our court as well. You asked for additional information. We provided on Friday afternoon his resume and his letter of interest that he gave to the judge. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but you have the information about Jesse for, to be a Pro Tem. And the Pro Tem is, we do not pay the Pro Tems. The city doesn't. Those are handled through the, by the judge. And under his contract, he takes care of any compensation or, or whatever is needed to take care of those Pro Tems when he needs them.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I remove that the council point Jesse London as municipal court Judge Pro Tem.
Second.
I have a motion with the second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Irvin?
Just that I did contact the Oregon State Bar as well and found he was in good standing. And no, no disciplinary action, so I have no objection.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, so item C is Chamber of Commerce report. Mr. Myers?
So this evening, we have the, not new anymore. It's been a year and quite a year it's been for the new CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Almost, almost a year. In a few days, it will be exactly a year, won't it? That she's been the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. And so she's here to give the annual report and to the council. You're muted, Shawna.
I'm used to being the main one talking at these things, so sorry about that. My name is Shawna Nye and I'm the new-ish CEO of the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce. And we're here at the new address, 836 East Main Street. And I'm here to present the 2020 Year in Review for the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce. I have some notes here because there was a lot that happened last year and I want to make sure that I try and cover everything. And I'm hoping I don't miss anything. As most of you know, in the beginning of 2020, the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce had no executive director. I was hired to start in April, but due to the seriousness of the virus and upcoming restrictions, it was necessary for me to start right away. My first day was March 16th, and I refer to that day as the day that the world shut down. I started with a focus on all businesses in Cottage Grove. Regardless of whether they were members of the chamber or not, it was so important that we made sure that everybody was safe. And I was trying to address and get information out to anybody as soon as possible. My first focus was and continues to be breaking down the plethora of information that's provided on a daily basis. It floods everyone's email and media outlets. And I would go through everything to find the most important facts and get them out as soon as possible. I was, I wanted to assist with any funding information and make sure people met their timelines and any application processes. I wanted to help them make sure that they were able to apply for any funding that was available. I wanted to update the businesses with the latest virus information and restriction requirements to make sure that they were current on everything. And so there was no possibility of them being fined for, for not understanding. So that was my first two weeks. Molly, Molly Marai from the Downtown Association or Downtown Cottage Grove and I worked together on a Facebook event in April, as soon as all the restaurants shut down, to help safely support our local restaurants. The community was asked to order takeout from our local restaurants and post a photo of their food and tell where it came from onto the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce Facebook page. This would enter them into win one of 10 $25 gift certificates that were purchased from the local restaurants. We had a Facebook Live drawing for the restaurant to purchase the gift certificate from and a Facebook drawing for the winners. And it was, I was amazed at the outcome. I think there was 75 entries, which was amazing to me. As I became familiar with the office practices, it was clear that we needed to streamline our processes. I made quite a few updates if we were going to lay a foundation for the next level of the Chamber of Commerce. We were running on one of the first versions of the Chamber Master, which is the main software we use to run our business. The website was functional, but it was dated and our technical support was confusing. It was, it was all over the place and our office manual was outdated and incorrect. I hired a consultant to come in and help document and streamline our business processes, which included upgrading our Chamber Master business software to allow for easier billing process, reporting, member updates and online payments. To assist the update and redesign of the website. There's still work to be done, but we now have the ability to make changes as soon as they come up. She assisted, assisted in hiring our new full-time office and membership manager, Georgia Haskell, and she created the new office procedures manual. We remodeled and moved into the new office at the corner of Main and 99. I'd like to give a huge shout out to Linda Trombley from Fort Rock Construction. She spent many sweat-filled days helping me paint in July in this building, which is like a fishbowl with no air conditioning. I couldn't have done it without her. And also thank you to Danny Solzby for his handyman services and the support in helping me make this happen. I filled our new visitor center here with treasures from our storage area in the community center and also additions from our local businesses and, and local talents. Our event season last year was canceled and we had to find a way to promote our town through this. Our tourism committee has been working on tourism video series. These videos will be based on our most popular brochures and available on our website very soon. I contacted all the Concert in the Parks sponsors and was able to reallocate funds to this project. We also received a grant from the Historic Landmarks Committee. Our tourism committee has also been working very closely with Traveling County in providing information on visit ideas while maintaining the necessary safety restrictions and social distancing through hiking, biking, covered bridges, waterfalls, and all of our outdoor COVID-friendly activities. Cottage Grove was named in several articles last year, my favorite being the January edition of Oprah's O Magazine, where we were listed number two on the top 10 charming towns to visit. We also had a local women, woman run the sixth fastest half marathon times in America on the Rao River Trail, and this was covered in Runner's, Runner's World. The New York Times named our own Bonanza as one of the best burgers. I was really shocked that Bonanza made it into the New York Times. That was so great. In addition to the pandemic restrictions, the summer brought isolation, social and political unrest and division, and then the fires came. This was true heartbreak and devastation, but this is where the true nature of our community came to light, even amongst division in our community. Even amongst the division, our community came together to help. The donations for those in need continue to be overwhelming. The chamber collected monetary donations and gift cards and delivered them to the Blue River Community Center. Our Halloween Howl was reconfigured into a Halloween Howl Cruise, and this was a learning experience. We got a little bit overwhelmed. While those who got through had a wonderful time, there, there were many had to be turned away, and we will take this into consideration if this ever happens again. Our legislative committee held a virtual question and answer session for our city council nominees. The chamber partnered with the City of Cottage Grove for a session to hear from the businesses in an effort to learn how we can help. The City of Cottage Grove provided a grant to the Chamber of Commerce to assist the small businesses through the holiday season. This funding allowed us to create the Jingle Don't Mingle campaign. We created short videos of Jingle the Elf highlighting local businesses and posted them on Facebook. We paid for Jingle to advertise on KND and purchase two shop local advertisements in each the Sentinel and the Chronicle with a listing of all businesses that were open. Jingle also called in a favor to Santa, Mrs. Claus and Mayor Gowing to light the Christmas tree. We hired local talent to create a wonderful video of the tree lighting ceremony to share on Facebook. We partnered with the Harrison School Parents Club, Parents Group on a gift certificate program that kept $4,300 local. In December, we signed a plea with several Lane County Chambers of Commerce to the governor so that she would assist with a safe plan for reopening and additional funding to support our law, our small businesses. The close of 2020 was extreme. The virus was relentless, and we found it necessary to reevaluate our membership structure. I knew if we were going to expect our members to trust us with their funds at such a crucial time, we needed to design our memberships so they receive the most benefit to their specific businesses. There are many new offerings, and I'd invite you to take a look at the new membership guide on our website, cgchamber.com. Included in the new structure is a membership sponsor option. This allows businesses who are not as affected by the pandemic to sponsor a struggling business. So far, we've had five businesses whose dues have been fully funded and six more will be funded as soon as we, we receive payment. In 2020, I, I feel our business retention fared pretty well. It has not been easy and most are still struggling. Therefore, we will continue to listen and support them in any way we can. As far as we know, there have not been any businesses who have closed due to the pandemic. Last year, the chamber had 17 new members, but 11 dropped. Our transient room taxes were down by 35% and our total income was down by 20%. Due to this income deficit, we qualified and were approved for the current PPP funding. We also applied and partially received the idle funding grant from the original grant funds. Our 2021 focus, we would like to create a strong volunteer group and provide them the opportunity to work on projects they are interested in. Len Blackstone, my board chair, and I have been investigating a partnership with a high school and connected Lane County Elevate Program to provide student intern and mentorship program. We'll finish the tourism videos and start the redesign of the movie history brochure. We'll reevaluate the educational programs we provide to members to make them more beneficial. And I'd like to get monitors up in my office, windows to advertise business and tourism. And I'll end with a thank you to Richard Myers for all his support this year. He's always been there to help me and answer my questions. And I, I also truly appreciate the relationships we have in this town. We have solid people who really care, and I can't wait to see what this year brings. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody got, Ms. Solzby?
Shawna, I just want to give a thank you to you from Danny and myself and our whole community. When we went through the hiring process, there were so many highly qualified candidates and you, of course, were on the top of the list. But one of our biggest selling points was that people already knew you too, because you were head of the Downtown Association. But we had no idea how important that would be going through COVID and all the closures and just having someone that was sympathetic to the businesses and could step in and help and actually knew all the business owners and employees of Cottage Grove. And we just want to give you a heartfelt thank you and keep up the good work. We're really proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fleck?
So Shawna, I just want to kind of echo Candace's comments. You know, Travis, when he left, said, you know, that the next chamber director should make it their own, and I believe that you've done that. I've actually really enjoyed all of the chamber directors we've had. And you've come in under, of course, some of the most challenging, you know, times. We can't do our business after hours, ribbon cuttings, you know? And yet, you know, your legislative updates have, you know, kept all of us informed, you know, the, the, oh my gosh, sometimes weekly changes in the COVID restrictions for businesses. And I personally really appreciate, you know, all of the time and effort you've given the business community, you know, because we've had some serious challenges from the OSHA, you know, requirements to all of the other, you know, changes that have come down the pike. So thank you so much and keep up the good work.
I kind of compare this year to when I had twins. I had twins first and then I had a single birth after. I don't know any different, so I'm just doing my job right now, just trying to get through it. Next year, we'll see what happens, but right now, I don't know any different, so this is fine.
Love it. Anyone else? Well, I'd just like to thank you, Shawna. I, I know when Travis was there, I was always texting him all the time on the weekends and everything. I just took him for granted that, that it's not a 40-hour work week. And I kind of do the same with you, and you've always been really good to respond to me because, you know, when somebody asks me something on Sunday afternoon, and I don't want to wait until Monday to get the answer. If I can get it, you get it to me and that's what, that's working together and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Stannett?
Hi, I'd also like to thank you for your work on behalf of Cottage Grove and the business community. Clearly at a challenging time, I wondered, I had a question. You mentioned something about kind of revisiting what you have to offer your members and, and what, what their dues are getting from the chamber. I haven't, forgive me, I haven't been to your website in a while, but can you kind of characterize maybe some changes or maybe how the mindset was forced to change due to COVID and?
Well, we, we offered different levels of, of being able to join. You can join at, you can join for as low as $150. What we did was we broke down each one of the added benefits and you can choose which benefits you want to add on, or you can choose nothing. But there is a full explanation of all of the different benefits. So instead of just accepting a different package that's available, I'm sorry, there's a train going by. It's except, instead of just accepting a, you know, a package with a lot of stuff that you don't need, you can join and then just add on to the, to the package with just the, just the things that interest you and will benefit your business the best. So I guess that's the biggest change. We also have several different packages of several different ways that you can market your business. You know, we do have ways. Seven, you know, we do have ways of, we are selling like advertising in the window here at the chamber. Because this intersection is the busiest intersection in Southern Lane County, which is part of the reason why this was a place where I was hoping that we were going to move. I wanted as many eyes on our tourism and visitor center and on the chamber as possible because I felt like we would be able to do a lot for our community. And I think being transparent and being right out here in front and always approachable is the key. So can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I'd love to just say thank you to Shawna. As a small business owner myself, having just joined the chamber last year, I really appreciated your warm welcome and your warm embrace of my personal small business. It's just such a great group of folks, and we are so lucky to have you in the role that you're in. Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for your presentation. Okay, we will move on then to item D, Safe Routs to School and Fillmore Stormwater Outfall Project Issue. Mr. Bradzby.
Mr. Bradzby. Ron.
Ron, if you're talking, we can't hear you. You're muted. While we're waiting for Ron to get him unmuted and everything, there is additional information that was asked for on Friday morning to attach to the agenda now. And so you can, you can call that up. If it's up there on your screen, you can refresh and it'll be there. Ron.
While we're waiting, I'd like to say that these pictures do not do this intersection justice. I went up there on Friday, and I can't believe the guys would lay those sidewalks and not have raised a red flag looking at the street. They, you know, like I said back when they had the problem in front of Bohemian, I'm a milrite. We filled it all the time. And you should have looked at the plans and looked at the reality and said, this isn't going to work. And I just can't believe it got done. It's a good eight inches lower than the street.
Hey, Richard, Ron, Ron is trying to connect. He's having trouble getting in. I don't know why.
Okay.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, do you want to go on with the next presentation, and we can do Ron with his two after that?
Let's do Concerns.
Okay, there you go.
Ms. Soulsby.
I just want to say that going back to the appointment to city council, that I want the public to know that it's not just based on the interviews that you guys all saw tonight, that we have extensive applications that we're also looking at. And so hopefully, that will also explain a little bit more why, you know, if somebody really shines in an interview or somebody doesn't really shine in an interview and why they might have been on the top of our list, that we have a lot more that we are actually looking at too. So hopefully, that'll help.
Mr. Flack.
Yeah, I just really want to encourage all of the folks who applied but were unsuccessful. Keep with it, you know, absolutely. Keep involved in the city government. Apply for budget committee openings, apply for planning commission, oh gosh, urban forestry, historic, you know, preservation. There are all sorts of committees. As I mentioned in my analysis, a lot of this comes down to, you know, people becoming informed and looking at ways to collaborate. One of the key things for me is consensus building. You know, I want a diverse board that's going to bring all sorts of opinions, but I also want a board that's going to be able to talk and work towards resolution. And so these are kind of the key pieces, and I really encourage all of the candidates to keep with it. And so thank you so much, you know, for this, and I know it's a hard process, so thank you again. And please, you know, apply for our committees and commissions.
Anyone else? Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of those committees, a couple of reports to give. One from the Transit Development Plan Committee. Essentially, this is a plan of collaboration between a number of different districts from LTD to operations going on out of, in Douglas County and putting a plan together for what what this area, Cottage Grove area, is looking to do to enhance the transportation, public transportation in this area. So there will be a presentation, I think, coming up in an April meeting with the draft of what we've been working on, the needs assessment memo and the implementation strategies brief. So those will be coming up, and I would just encourage the public, I know we've got a good turnout here today, to be part of that. And there will be opportunities to weigh in on that as well. So that's one of them. I made contact with the Lane Workforce Partnership Council, so there will be an upcoming meeting on that. Have read their bylaws and kind of have a general idea of what they're, why they exist. So look forward to doing future updates on that. And then the Lane Economic Committee met today, and we had a presentation from Community Lending Works. And I guess the biggest takeaway from that is there is capital available for small businesses available. And there are new pilot programs in the works that they're hopeful to be releasing that lower the barrier of the collateral requirements that are traditional lending mechanisms have in place. So that would hopefully help small businesses, entrepreneurs, startups get going sooner than later. And I think that probably does it for this report.
Anyone else? Mr. Stannett.
Yeah, just to report that I attended the year-end retreat of the Watershed Council on the 24th. Obviously, kind of a truncated event that was, that may have been done differently in non-COVID times. But there were a lot of great things to report with the council, a lot of great projects for the betterment of the watershed, strong partnerships with community partners. It sounds like they're going to be able to employ some more young people working on a lot of those projects this year. I think there there was a year-end evaluation that was required by the city. And I think the council was able to to be pretty proud of the way they saw themselves. I know that they've got a report that they bring to the council too, so I will try to step on what they're doing, but I think it is positive. They've made some great progress. Thank you.
Well, no concerns. I just want to say thank you again. I am honored and humbled to be sitting here tonight. There were five other applicants, and I would love to sit down and talk with each one and really get to know you. We are all the same board, and I feel like it's really important that all of us come together. It's not just me up here. I'm representing the entire board, and I want to be completely transparent and completely accessible. So please, please reach out. This is for everyone in Ward 1, Cottage Grove. Thanks.
So I'd just like to comment on Friday night, we had the Elkhog banquet virtual, which wasn't as fun as being at the LCC in person. But I want to thank everybody for that went on there and watched Mr. Myers get his award. And I was glad to see that your wife and your daughter got to go on there as well and watch that. And so hope they enjoyed it. I just want to answer Mr. Taddy's question about the camera and all this equipment. It is ours. And legislative is talking about making meetings virtual out there all the time for people. I was talking with Mr. Myers last week. We are going to be proactive and not wait for legislative to tell us we're going to have to do it. We're just going to go ahead and do it and be ahead of the game. So that's our plan. It'll probably be rerun TV, but it'll at least be accessible live on the, via Zoom, even when in-person starts up. And then as far as the, one of the things I wanted to cover, and since we had an opening, I didn't want to fill the second Vision Keeper's position. And so I'd like to entertain a motion that we make Savage the Vision Keeper other person on their committee. And I can't do that right now?
No. We'd have to add that to the agenda, and we didn't do it. So, yeah, we can do it next meeting. Yeah. We'll put it on the schedule.
Okay, since you're going to put it on the schedule, I want her to be my, the alternate instead of me for chamber then. Okay. All right. Do we have Mr. Bradzby yet?
I think he's color eight.
Ron?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you do.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. As we've been moving through the south, excuse me, Safe Routs to School project, about two weeks ago, the contractor called me out to the intersection of South 8th and Taylor Avenue. He explained in his experience in work in Eugene that they were required to provide a four-by-four-foot clear area before entering the ramp onto the sidewalk. And Eugene had to have a slope of 2% or less. I provided counsel in my memo that had pictures to kind of show what the intersection looked like, and I've encouraged people to go by the intersection. So staff came back after the meeting, and according to ODOT's State APWA details, there is a four-by-four-foot clear area requirement. And the details were saying that the maximum slope in the direction of travel is 4%. Staff contacted the design engineer, branch engineering, and asked if the clear area was required and what options were available to correct the issue because of the difference in elevations to make a smooth transition for vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic using the crosswalks. The design engineer provided some information from the ADA, current ADA guidelines about clear space and how it's applied. As far as the options, he explained that it's very difficult to modify existing conditions to meet new ADA requirements. And so he recommended that we do what is called grade break. And I tried to, I think I may have gotten bogged down with the engineering terminology with counsel on Friday morning. But a grade break, basically, if you imagine a straight line, and that's level, and it changes going up or down, the point of that deflection is called a grade break. And I tried to provide a cross-section of the east side of Taylor Avenue at South 8th Street. And in the memo there, I've tried to explain the different grade breaks that we have. Current ADA standards tell us that in the direction of travel, basically, the maximum slope is 1 and 12. And we, as best as we can, we need to provide, maintain that slope from not only in the crosswalk, or excuse me, there are handicap ramps, but across the crosswalk and down. And if counsel went out there, they can see that the south side of Taylor Avenue is much higher than the north side of Taylor Avenue. It's about a foot to one foot, four inches. And so now I've come to counsel, and I'm asking, what would you rather see? You know, do we use the grade break approach option? Or do we regrade and repave? Councilman Irvin, Friday morning, asked what the price would be for the grade break option. The consultant, excuse me, Wildish Construction came back with an estimate, and they said it would be about $23,000. He also added that if they came out, they would do, come out about eight to 10 feet from the current curb and transition down, they're down to the new gutter bar. And then he said he felt that the result would be a very rough ride, and it would not meet ADA compliant at crosswalks. Option two that we came across was to regrade the intersection, basically going up the side streets some distance and then regrade from that point all four directions, regrade the intersection to flatten out the parabolic curve, if you will say, and regrade it so we could have a smoother transition across the roadways. And that option costs $58,365.20. So that's the discussion before counsel tonight. However, I know counsel is going to ask, I'm anticipating the council's going to ask, why did we got there? And how come? I've contacted both the design engineer and the contractor. I have asked them to, for the engineer to read, come out and survey what has been constructed to make sure that some information that needed to be transferred from the engineer to the contractor was appropriate, and some information wasn't transposed or anything like that. So once that's been determined, it's been built, say it's built to design, then we can hone in on why and what the culprit was for the settlement. So again, it has started, both the engineer and the consultant, or contractor are checking with their subs or the people doing the work to make sure that, you know, no information was transposed or missing or bad information. Other information from, that was requested Friday from counsel, Councilman Irvin asked, he was wondering if this would be, my understanding was, you know, are these roads appropriate for replacement? Or should we be focusing our monies at a different intersection? From the Paver Report that staff presented, Taylor Avenue from South 7th to South 10th has a PCI rating, which is the condition of the asphalt. It is 60, which was in the fair category. Comments that did say from zero to five years until a major maintenance repair would be needed on that street. South 8th Street, south of Taylor, has a PCI rating of 54, which is a poor condition. The break point between fair and poor condition is a PCI of 55. And again, its comments were zero to five years until major maintenance. And then the other section of South 8th Street, north of Taylor Avenue, had a PCI of 60, again, fair conditions. But it must have shown some bitter wear or less deterioration because it has a comment of six to 10 years until major maintenance repair. And then also, Councilman Roberts asked for cost. I got cost updated today. Again, the budget Again, the budget hasn't changed, it's five point five million dollars. Currently, we're at four point one million dollars. The original bid was three point four million dollars, and staff will recommend, is gonna recommend option two, which is regrading the intersection, which is a commitment, another commitment of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, and there are future change order items that will be coming before counsel estimated a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. So, in summary, I recommend that staff approve regrading and repaving the intersection to provide a smoother transition and better ride for everyone at the intersection of South Eighth Street and Taylor Avenue. And the estimated value is fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. Are there any questions?
Mr. Fleck?
So, Ron, you were saying even to do the cheap option, which may leave the asphalt in, it's twenty, twenty-three thousand, was it?
Yes, yes, sir.
And going with the option to do the fifty-eight will get us in the ballpark as far as the transitions needed for ADA?
We'll, we'll be, I won't guarantee we'll get there, but we'll be a lot closer. We're not gonna have that parabolic curve cross-section at Taylor, we'll flatten that out to be more of a cross slope and the contractors, you know, we brainstormed for a couple of days of options, and he said, I won't guarantee you will get it, get you there, but we'll be a heck of a lot closer than what it is now.
Well, and I appreciate your conversation Friday morning, because absolutely, you know, if you're on a hillside, those are gonna be some challenges. At this point, I see Councilor Irvin wants to make some comments, I'll wait on a motion, but at this point, I'm supporting just regrading and paving the intersection. You know, the difference of thirty thousand is a lot of money, but as far as roads go, that's just a blip. I mean, that's just such a small amount relative to the cost of roads, and I think doing it right at this point makes much more sense than doing it partway. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ron, for bringing that additional information. Just trying to search the source of frustration here to and
Understand.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're on board with that, but you know what's, I heard, I heard some language about, you know, basically looking for who's responsible for this for a future settlement. So I wanted to clarify that, if that means that if fault is found somewhere up, you know, from the inception of this, the design or implementation or engineering, that there could be possible reimbursement for whatever we do. So that would be one part of the question. The other part is, you know, how much is it to actually just redo the sidewalk and leave the street alone? And is it, is that more, is that more costly than redoing the whole street? So I guess those are my thoughts.
First question, yeah, I think that, you know, staff is, you know, is very aware and concerned about the difference. I think if, I, I guess I'm, you know, you're innocent until proven guilty, but you know, I guess if somebody's found the fault, yeah, we, you know, we'll look at, have discussions about, you know, why it happened and how we can repair it, and I believe, you know, irrationally so, there should be some type of settlement or reimbursement. Second question, gut feeling, Councilman Irvin, yes, I think putting the sidewalks back would be cheaper, however, the grant was for ADA compliance and Safe Routes to School. So, you know, we've now made the, you know, the sidewalks and the crosswalk, excuse me, handicap ramps, ADA ramps, excuse me, and, and the sidewalks now ADA, ADA compliant, and that was the purpose of the grant. I think if we go back and maybe redo them and become non-compliant, then you know, we may not get all our grant money eligible. So, I've kinda, you know, in making decisions, how to spend the money, you know, the purpose of the grant was to be ADA compliant more, you know, from, from the new elementary down to the middle school, and the middle school along North Fourth Street to South River Road. So, great question, definitely an option, but you know, the project kinda got started based on, you know, making everything ADA compliant.
And if I may clarify my understanding, we're and we're thinking we're not gonna be ADA compliant, but that's only, even with the redo of the street, but that's only the street portion, and that, but, so that doesn't affect the grant?
Um, correct, you are correct. We, we we are trying because of the hillside and the elevation differences, you know, one side being higher, higher than the other. According to information that city's received, we, we have to document reasons why we cannot be, you know, fully ADA requirement. We have, as I've mentioned several times, we have a parabolic cross-sections. We, we have a difference of elevation, we have two hills coming, you know, we're coming downhill on Eighth, and we're coming downhill on Taylor, and we're trying to blend all those together and, you know, manage stormwater and various things, and so we may not get true compliance, you know, across the street. But we're gonna be a lot closer, and we'll have to document if we don't make it, why. But we can also show that we made it better. The grant, the way I understand the findings of the grant or requirements, it is not, we are not reimbursed for pavement, we are, you know, we're reimbursed to make, you know, the sidewalks and the handicap ramp. I believe we could make the case that, you know, the crosswalk, we're doing this for more of the crosswalk, and I think that is eligible. I know it in, in the meeting we had prior, you know, to learn about the grant, they said only painting the crosswalk was eligible. So, we'd have to do a little more investigation to see if, if this applied, you know, because we, because of the direction of travel, south to north and north to south, you know, it was non-ADA compliant, so by coming closer, I believe we could make a, a case for it.
And I apologize for rehashing this, my pea brain is not, not comprehending what this completely, if I'm, when I'm looking at these pictures, if you raised up both of the sidewalks on either side, and rather than shave roadway away, compromising it more, it could be added to the base, and then that slope, those grade breaks would be reduced, but that would require the sidewalks to be raised. And that could be done with future repaving rather than really having to redo the whole road in the base and everything. I'm just wondering if it, if it's potentially cheaper or less expensive upfront, or overall, and that would be something I don't know the cost analysis on, to redo the sidewalks and leave the road alone, and not have to redo it in a more aggressive manner in the future, that that might not be, that might be a better option, but I'm certainly open to be educated.
Yeah, that's why, I guess I'm going through the steps as I explained to find out, you know, if anybody's at fault and how the designer, you know, first I had to determine was it built right. If it's built right, then, you know, I have to sit down with the design team and talk about the intersection, what they looked at. What I don't know, Councilman Irvin, is, you know, they, they may have all the grades worked out to meet ADA, and if we bring something up, as you're saying, that's, that's definitely a solution, but now do we, now do we go out of ADA compliance by raising elevation, you know? You know, like, I was talking to a coworker just before quitting time, and he's designing handicap ramps for us in another part of town, and he's found out if you change one elevation, it changes the elevation in six different areas, and so you need to go around and check that. So I think that's a point on the table, I don't know how to appropriately at this time, give you a definite answer, but it will be coming forward, you know? I can keep you informed, or counsel informed on, you know, the findings. And that's definitely a, a solution that, that still could be out there. You know, it's, it's, it's a question to be asked and addressed.
Ron, I commented on this before when you were trying to get on, online, but my, my concern is, why do we keep getting contractors that just do what they're told and not question anything, because you could, you don't even have to have a mechanical background to tell that's not gonna work, and you're laying the forms for that sidewalk. And I just, it really bothers me that we're getting that quality of workmanship that you know, if they were, if that was happening on my plant, that contractor would not be working there anymore.
Sure. Sure, no, Wildish is, like I said, I know in this instance, it's not good for them, but I know that they've called me out there many times, and we discuss issues left and right. Yeah, I would have, I'd have been nice to know, you know, had a little more, you know, meeting or question when they, they were doing it, just to give time to kinda like, let's hold off for this, let's, let's do it. You know? Yeah, I, I can, you know,
Yeah, and now if you go back and argue it's here or there, now we're, we're sitting where we are, so what's the best, best economical way for us to get past it?
Yeah, and that's, you, you make a very good point, sir. Yeah, we have some work to do to clear up why we got here and how we got there, and to address the problem, but you know, I've come to counsel, you know, looking for direction kinda to finish the project, but you know, I think those are all things that we need to, we as a staff need to sit down with the design engineer and the contractor and kinda work through that.
Mr. Stenit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ron, did I hear you say that that section of Taylor, did I hear zero to five years before a needed major repair? Did I hear that correctly?
That's based on, on the, the paver model where we, we went out and assessed all the road sections in, in town. They looked at various conditions and asphalt conditions, and so yes, you are correct, sir. By, by the report, that's now two years old, sixty could now be fifty-eight because no improvements have been done. But anyway, in two thousand eight, nineteen, excuse me, yes, the staff was presented with these conditions, and none of the conditions really have changed. And so, you know, they have worn down, so you are correct. By their assessment.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, sir, go ahead.
Does, do you foresee, or does it often happen that regrading an intersection like this can entail unforeseen costs or difficulties, or do you think fifty-eight thousand and change is, is a pretty straightforward solid estimate of what this would cost to repave?
I asked the contractor to, you know, I'm coming to you with the change order, but I'm asking them to, to work with quantities within our, our normal bid schedule, so I've been saying, let's use our bid quantities to come up with that. And so, we've had discussion, I know the past history of the intersection, about five or six years ago, it was pumping, I've hired a a smaller asphalt company, we dug out the intersection, we found, you know, a bad area of clay that was causing water to pump up through the pavement, we filled that hole about three feet deep with gravel. On the north side, we filled it with gravel, compacted gravel, about a foot on the south side. So there's history there. So I do believe fifty-eight thousand is pretty good. You know, considering, you know, we're doing, you know, we've already done the hard work in the sidewalks and ADA. I don't think it's unreasonable.
So, from that, it sounds like to me that we, you know, this is an unfortunate situation, but we may have just been goaded or prompted into regrading an intersection before we may have wanted to. I don't see ta, traffic on Taylor going down with a new school on one end, I, I think the prospect of development on Tenth Street would only add to that, to the traffic in that area. We were, I think we were funded to, to provide Safe Routes to School, and I would support regrading the intersection to, to make that possible.
Ron? Thank you. Ron, I have a question. This may have been covered in previous conversations, but you, you say it's been built to design. When was this intersection built to that design?
Well, they, let me back up Councilwoman Savage, Councilwoman, excuse me. You know, I don't know the history of the roads, so you know, to answer, you know, when it was first built and what our forefathers did, I can't, can't ask that. So what I meant by built to design, we hired an engineering firm to design Safe Routes to School project. And so, they've made, you know, they've come out and surveyed it, they've done their engineering techniques, they've determined where these improvements need to be installed and what elevation. I wanna make sure, before, you know, we start, I'm trying to do a process of elimination. As I stated earlier, the design engineer passed in information to Wildish Surveyor, you know, he went out and from the information branch gave him, he went out in the field and staked it, and, you know, showed where the crew were to dig, how deep, and lay out various items. So I wanna make sure by my statement is, did they build it to design? Is, does it match what the information branch gave? If it is, if it is to design, then I think the air, besides, as the mayor said, you know, they were a little rambunctious, the air tends to go back, or the fault, or the decision-making goes, goes more back onto the design engineer, why, why did these things happen? Did you check your elevation, you know, did you check your design to the street elevation? You know, why are we consistently low on three sides with, you know, what was your thought process? And so I, I think, you know, that's how I use the phrase, did it match design? You know, are the improvements that have been constructed right now for this project match what, you know, the engineer intended for him to do? And I need to verify that.
Just for clarification, sorry, just for clarifications for myself, you're saying that this would be a twenty-three thousand to a fifty-eight thousand dollar difference than what's already been proposed? And that's the discussion that's on the table?
Yes, ma'am, we, 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 we had, one option is, I'm just gonna say it's gonna be, I'm gonna call it crude, is a crude way to do it. It's twenty-three thousand, I think the more refined way is the fifty-eight thousand. Or the option of, of, you know, Councilman Irvin, I guess there's a third option. I don't know, you know, all the particulars, but it would take more investigation, you know, we could raise, take out sidewalks and regrade it by raising the three corners to make corners to make, no, don't do as much to the road section.
Thank you.
Did you guys have something else I do for you?
Mr. Roberts? So Ron, is it, uh, for me, it's that southwest corner. That's-
Yes, sir.
I went out there three times. Uh, I'm no engineer, but I, you know, my last time, I took a, a twelve foot two by four in a level with me. I just can't see how that was poured and put in with that big of a, it's an eight and a half inch difference at the end.
Mm-hmm.
I got pictures on my phone. Um, you say you can look into this. Is there any way we can just table this decision until more information is brought forward to council?
Um, yeah, we, we can definitely table it. Um, you know, that's counsel-
I hate, I hate to make a fifty-eight thousand dollar decision when we don't have all the answers.
Correct. And, and I think, I think you, you have the right to table it. I guess we're just kind of have to be prudent of getting the information out to the people. You know, they, obviously people want to, you know, see progress on a project and that's going to sit there for a while. But, uh, you know, I, I believe you guys need to be informed, so I have no problem tabling it.
And is there any chance that southwest corner could just be redone?
Um, yeah, um-
Not our dollar, but on their dollar? It just seems, it just seems like bad, I've been watching this project all over that part of town. And I mean, they've been doing exceptional work. And then when I go walk over there, I've got a video on my phone where the sidewalk goes up, then down, then up, and then down, and then back up, and then it's eight inches from the road.
Correct, correct. Um, yeah, I, it's going to be on, I would guess, I don't know what the future holds, but you know, I guess, you know, let's be honest, it looks like, you know, one of them, one of the two players may get, you know, not sued, but a settlement, you know, on the thing. I just don't know right now who to blame, you know? Did the Wildish surveyor stake it wrong? You know, that's, um, so that would be on Wildish. If everything looks great to, you know, the plans and the elevations were matched what branch designed, then I think, you know, the settlement moves, shifts from Wildish to branch engineering. And, uh, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, falsely accuse anyone or anything like that. I just want to, you know, get to the bottom of it and why and, you know, you know, you know, I, I, I don't know the, the specifics around it, you know, being a, having design engineer, I didn't get to, you know, I just reviewed. But if, when the designer, you, you know, you kind of, you have your parameters, you, you, you do what you do to meet the criteria and then, you know, then there's, should be some checks and balances to look over and say, okay, does this work? And then if it doesn't, then, you know, decisions internally the engineer needs to, to make right, you know, do we hold sidewalk and, and regrade, you know? I think that's the problem here. We have your eight inches, but again, by the plans, there is no indication that we need to do anything special to the intersection that was going to blend. So something went wrong somewhere. You know, we're eight, as you said, eight and a half inches off in the worst case, but I don't know whose fault it is. You know, and I'm trying to determine that for, for the council and the citizens and, and, uh, you know, make, make everything right, you know, not only financially, but, you know, for this town.
Can we do that, Mr. Mayor? Can we motion to put this off? Can it? Mr. Fleck, would just not motion it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I, let's worry about the funding and who's responsible later. You know, I mean, you guys have seen this project around town, it's all torn up. Um, you know, I think the, the option in, you know, for us at this point is to, you know, redo this and do it right. Um, and then we can worry about who's going to reimburse us later. I think that's, that's not something I'm not supportive of tabling at all. Um, I think that that's, you know, one of those things that we need to sort out after the fact, but that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that sentiment, Mike, and I, I don't want to see a project held up longer than it needs to be. So one of my thoughts on this is, you know, how long does it take to get, well, there's a number of thoughts on this. One is, you, you, you posed the question to the two different parties that are involved, uh, the engineer and the designer and, and, you know, before any lawsuit happens, say, you know, who, who, who made the mistake here? And if they immediately raise their hand and go, you know, we see it, we recognize it, we're going to make it right, then we didn't have to spend fifty-eight thousand dollars and they fix it. And it gets done relatively quickly. If it, if, if they put up a fight, then, okay, then we're going to move on, we're going to try to recoup that money, uh, at another time. But then the other problem is, we're not necessarily doing it right by ADA, because we're not going to achieve ADA compliance, even if we regrade, or most likely won't with, with the level that the sidewalks are. So if we were going to do it right, it sounds like we would have to redesign, check if ADA is even possible, uh, by, by raising or lowering whatever it would have to be of the sidewalks and regrading. Um, but I don't, I don't know why we can't at least pose that question and try to get an expedient answer, um, even if it is, uh, pushing, pushing it to the next me do, remember, whatever we need or saying, hey, the direction is, all right, we're going to authorize the regrading of this if we get pushed back, but we're not going to drop the issue and, and let somebody make this big mistake that cost us extra money. Uh, I guess that's the assurance I need, is that the issue isn't going to get dropped and that the project gets done as expediently as possible.
I, I agree with Councilor Urban.
Any more council comments? Mr. Myers?
Yeah, and, um, tabling is not the appropriate, um, action to take. You would just postpone the decision and, and move forward to the next item and not make a decision on this, looking for more information. Tabling is a specific action under Roberts Rules of Order that requires several other things to go through and, and stuff like that. If you have some kind of actual action on the board and you don't. And so I would just say you're postponing it for more information to the future meeting.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I was telling Mr. Roberts. We just don't make a motion on it because it's, if we don't make a motion, we don't act on it.
Yeah.
So I'm going to open up the public comments. I know there's two people. I'm going to go with Mr. Carl first because he's been raising his hand for a while.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say, okay, this company Wildish that is doing the work, while they were doing the work on the corner up here, because I live on Eighth Street, they actually did the driveway or the, from the street to the sidewalk and part of the sidewalk, at the same time, they're supposed to be working up the street. If we're going to be paying this extra money for them to fix what's going on up here, did they really get charged? Did that, did that homeowner get charged for what they're doing? I mean, where's the money really going? You know, it, it just, to me, these are my tax dollars being thrown away. Just my comments and I hope that that's taken in. Maybe, maybe someone can actually do some research. Did Wildish actually charge this, uh, this homeowner thirty-four hundred dollars like they told me they charged them? To me, it just sounds like it's not right.
Thanks.
As I said-
Mr. Taddy?
Dwayne Taddy, eighteen oh three West Main Street, Scottish School, Oregon. I have two questions for the councillors here. These are my notes. These are my notes that I took. I saw very few of you taking notes. And I'd also like to see a show of hands from the councillors of who went out to the site and took a look, because I heard Council Urban state that he looking at, he asked a question saying, looking at the picture. So let me see a show of hands of who went out to Ethan Taylor and looked at this issue. As, as, see that? See the show of hands? Okay, yeah, I, I asked four times, Councilor Soulsby. Do I, anybody else go out there and look at this?
Don't target anybody in specific.
Oh, she raised her hand. I just-
Oh, okay.
I wanted to, I saw it. Um, staff asked and, and Council Robert's was out there twice that I saw him out there and I joined him with Carl and two other homeowners. This infuriates me, infuriates me to no end, that I don't see a show of hands when staff recommended, because he said, not only did staff recommend that councillors go out there and look, he said that his own pictures don't do it justice. That infuriates me to no end. These are my notes. I do appreciate Council Urban, Council Roberts for bringing it up, and Councilor Soulsby for supporting, postponing the decision. Because like Council Urban says, time and ti- I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I know what he's saying, because time and time again, we have seen far too many things put off because they're just done and we move on to the next project. And his, it sounds to me like his concern is that we're going to spend the money, we're going to fix it, and then we're going to maybe one day see a reimbursement. Bothered me the most is that on Friday during the agenda session, we were told in this memorandum that there were only two options. One was great breaks and the other was to resurface and, uh, regrade the street. And the total cost to the taxpayer, to the city, to the taxpayers, to Carl and me and all of you folks, was zero to fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. Sounded like the great breaks were free and the surfacing was fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now we come to find out that, uh, you know, thank you, Council Urban for asking the question on Friday at the agenda session, how much it would cost us. And we didn't get a solid number. We asked if it was a couple grand or what? Now we're hearing it's twenty-three thousand dollars. So what's the zero option? The zero option is doing nothing. And if you went out there and you looked at the problem, it's obvious that you can't do nothing. The condition of the road doesn't matter, because if you look at the paper report, which I have, even the part that was rated at fifty-five, or I'm sorry, fifty-four, was the high end of poor, which means the better end of poor, because fifty-five is the middle ground, which, which is listed as fair. So you have to assume it's close enough to fair. There are plenty of roads, there are plenty of roads in this town that need fifty-eight thousand dollars. Plenty of them. Not this road. What needs to be done here is it needs to be postponed and answered. They need to find out who, we need to find out who's responsible for this. I have questions of my own. Does the company have to obtain permits? I would assume no, but maybe they do. Does anybody from the city go out periodically and inspect, like after they laid the forms before they poured the concrete? I mean, I really should just go sit down and you guys should postpone this. And you guys that say that you support it, spending the fifty-eight grand, go, go out there, take the advice of the city staff and my advice. And I'm sure Council Roberts would agree and Carl, the guest here tonight, who's been out there, would agree that you should look at it before you make a decision. Um, so as a citizen of, of, of this, uh, city, I, I support Council Roberts' motion to postpone this issue. And thank you for the support with that, Council Soulsby and Council Urban. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fleck?
So, so I lived at Seventh and Taylor for several years. I lived for twenty years off of Tenth Street at Harrison. I know this intersection intimately. And if Mr. Taddy is wondering why he was not appointed to the council, this is exactly it. And make, you know, some sort of disparaging remarks when I'm certainly familiar with that intersection. I've driven it over and over again over the years. I certainly understand the problem. And so I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm bothered that this needs to become some sort of, you know, uh, I, I, I find that Mr. Taddy is upset and not about not getting an appointment and we have a problem to fix. Now, if the council wants to wait, you know, a, a couple weeks to the next meeting, I'm okay with that. I'm not saying that I don't. I don't think we want to leave these holes in the ground for the next three months while this is litigated, or six months or a year, is the point I'm trying to make. And I guess that's where I'm at. I also asked many questions Friday about this issue. Um, you're certainly welcome to go back and look at that. I have my own concerns. But at the end of the day, we've got a project that needs to go forward and the litigation, whatever the result of that is, will get resolved. And so, you know, I, what I'm looking for is productive decision making. And I guess that's why I'm sitting here, is to try to make a difference that's actually going to work and make these streets work right. As Ron was saying from this, you know, because of the grades, getting ADA is not probably going to happen. And I guess, going back to Ron, um, you know, you can look at, within five, what was it, five years, we may need to redo the street. What's the reality? I mean, we've got so many subgrade streets in this town, that the ra- reality is that it's going to be ten or fifteen years at a minimum before we even looking at, you know, regrading the street. So what we have to do is we have to come up with a solution that's going to make sense, that's going to get this project moving forward and is going to resolve, you know, how this error came to be. Um, and I, and I'm just, like I said, I'm just bothered. I apologize. We've been in this meetings now for three hours straight. And so I apologize if I'm a little snippy. Um, but you know, let's, let's move on.
I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm all for just letting this sit and get more information, because I can go get my scrapbook. I've got a picture of my Nova sitting on that same corner in nineteen seventy-nine and the curb was six inches higher than the street. Now it is eight inches lower than the street. So I think somebody did something wrong there and I would like to see, to, before we do something and then we try to figure out why, to me, it's fix it right the first time, not, not try to patch what was screwed up and then try to come back and get money back out of it. That's just my opinion. Mr. Carl? I only usually let people talk once, so make it really short.
I, I would like to say, if anyone could go out there and look at it, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk. If, if everyone go out there and look at it, what's done is not right and it's not safe. Even what they have in there right now is not safe for the people that I watch riding down in there in the wheelchairs in the middle of the street. Just come out and look at it. I'll go with you at the same time and explain it to me, how you would think that would be right, what they got. I'm sorry, it's not right.
Thank you. And since I let Mr. Carl talk, Dwayne, I'll give you just a couple minutes, make it short.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You've done this before for me. And I, I, I will say that I appreciate the voice, it sounds like a voice of reason, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I will ask, I, I will write on what Carl said. What's done is not done right, in, in my eyes, his eyes. And ask yourself, sitting there, being the people who are, uh, partially in charge of taxpayers' money, what if you approve this, we start digging this out and we make this right? And then some six months down the road, somebody admits fault. And now we've, and even if we're reimbursed, now we've got to go back and work on, make the sidewalk right. Because I'll tell you, if you go out there and you look at this, you're going to see from west to east on Taylor, you're going to see it go up and it flatten out where they, where a guy actually in his yard now has to slope his yard or build a retaining wall, some foot tall, then it levels out, then it goes up. And Council Roberts and I have went out there with a tape measure, thirty-three foot tape measure. We measured it from thirty-three feet back and simply bringing that sidewalk, that gutter a- at the crosswalk ramp up to level with the road will make that section that goes east to west straight. So you won't come up, level out, come up, level out. That also, when you're looking at the sidewalk that comes down the hill, northbound on Eighth, will also bring that up, because that's awfully steep. And there's a metal grate in that sidewalk that when it gets icy, somebody's going to slip like on a banana peel, right? So that will also bring that up and level that up. Also, when you're looking south, down Eighth, you'll see the jog in there. And I can only imagine somebody with a disability is getting wrecked up bad there. So thank you for the opportunity to speak twice. Thank you. Thank you.
So, can we all agree that we'll let Mr. Brasby come back with something more? And do a little more digging into this, even though it's dragging it on? Good with that?
I think we're all in agreement.
Mr. Stett, you got something to add, or do you?
Um, I, I'd like to add that I, uh, I live nearby. I drive that intersection every day. Um, I run it almost every day. I've stopped twice since we were, um, uh, that it was suggested we do so on Friday. Um, I didn't feel um, compelled to raise my hand based on the earlier demand to do so. Um, I don't think the, the fact that it wasn't done properly is in question. Um, I wonder if we can wait for a maybe at this stage, for a preliminary outlook, uh, and uptake from, from Mr. Brasby. Um, he may know a lot more in two weeks. If, if it looks in two weeks like a drawn-out process, maybe we need to revisit it and get something done quicker. That's kind of, kind of where I'm.
All right. You okay with that, Mr. Brasby?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on now to business of the city manager. We have item page and presentation for Pegasus Equestrian Project, Mr. Flyers.
Yes, we have representatives from, um, Pegasus Equestrian Resort and Venue Project on. Uh, Drew Milligan on the screen there, and JW, um, are there, and so they're going to give us a little presentation on this project. It's south of Cottage Grove, about thirty miles at the Metz Hill exit on I-5, a three-thousand acre, um, development. They're going before the Douglas County Planning Commission in April. And so it will have some impact on Cottage Grove, so we thought it'd be good to have them give a little presentation about what it is, and and what kind of impact it may have, and, and some of the things they're doing.
Hi, yes, um, Drew Milligan, uh, I, uh, then this is my father, JW Milligan. Um, I run a, I run a hedge fund, uh, jointly with my brother Quinn, uh, who's not here right now, but we also run the, uh, Pegasus Equestrian International Resort and Venue Project, uh, which is down, uh, like you said, on, at, uh, Metz Hill Exit there, on about twenty-eight hundred acres right now. Um, if I could share my screen, I do have a short presentation. We have timed this, it's only fifteen minutes.
It's less than that.
Uh, so.
Let me turn you on. Let me turn you on, so you can share. Yeah.
Now, he's being modest. Their head, their hedge fund is the, in the top one percent of the nation.
Yeah, it depends on your metric, but, um.
There you go.
Okay. Bring one or two.
While you were having the sidewalk discussion, the City of Drain actually, um, passed a motion and a letter to support our application in front of Douglas County.
Well, yeah, um, so. Okay, uh, can I move this? I can. All right, well, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the, of the council for your time. We, um, so just to summarize the development, what we're hoping to do here is, uh, have one of the most versatile international equestrian venues and resorts in North America, serving, uh, the West Coast from, uh, from Canada down to Southern California along I-5, and also to serve the, uh, international equestrian market. Um, and I do have a map here. Uh, we're located on a twenty-eight hundred acre site just north of Oakland. It's about a twenty-minute drive from Roseburg, within an hour's drive of Eugene. Um, now, it's important to know that usually competitors will actually drive twelve-plus hours to get to a good venue, especially on the West Coast, uh, because we have so few of them.
And these urban growth boundaries are on here, because the ORSs require that we coordinate traffic and any economic impact with the communities that are listed on here.
Right, so that's, uh, that's what this was taken from. Uh, so to summarize the development itself, it's not a boarding facility, uh, or a, or a schooling show facility. Um, it would be, it would include four polo fields, uh, three to five indoor climate-controlled competition arenas, uh, two Grand Prix arenas, one grass, one sand, eight, uh, eight or more outdoor competition arenas, in addition to practice and warm-up rings. Uh, one, uh, visitor center on our highway frontage, uh, including an equestrian center and a wine tasting room. Um, a, and there is a luxury hotel resort and spa with a hundred fifty rooms, which is actually required, uh, to qualify for the Destination Resort Siting under Oregon, uh, Destination Resort rules. Um, we also hope to include auxiliary businesses such as distill, uh, distillery branded retail, um, other support businesses, and additional, uh, revenues from onsite sales. Um, that's probably getting a little bit too much in the weeds, but. Uh, so why are we?
The big thing, economic.
Right, this is why we're presenting it to you. Um, now, we've, we've been working on this for quite a lo, quite a long time. Um, in twenty thirteen, we actually, on a smaller potential site, we commissioned an economic INBEX study. Uh, so these numbers are actually probably likely.
Northwest out of Eugene.
Right, eco-northwest out of Eugene. Uh, these numbers are probably likely to be a little bit larger on this site, because we were looking at a much smaller site at the time. Um, to give you an idea, this would create, it was estimated that this would create about eight-hundred forty-one job years of construction employment while under development, uh, and would add about two-hundred fifty-three-point-eight million dollars of total revenue impact to the state economy yearly. Um, to give you an idea of, of comparables, uh, you might remember the, uh, Olympic traffic, track and field trials in Eugene, where they upgraded the, uh, what was it, Hayward Field? Um, I was able to pull up figures. It was estimated the impact was about thirty-one million dollars. Um, well, we'd have, we'd have recurring revenues now. To keep in, keep in mind, we're, we're, we're talking very large-scale, um, events.
And by the way, our tourists will be there three to five days. You don't just come down for a day, you stay to three to five years, and you come from all.
Three to five days.
And you come from all over the world. And the impact is way more than the Olympic trials, and it's on an annual basis. In some years, it'll even be higher.
Well, well, part of the reason the impact is, is larger than you might expect is because the competitors and the spectators generally stay for a longer period of time than you would get with, say, yeah, a football event or something like that. It's usually spread out over the course of a week to multiple weeks.
By the way, it's not a football event. People do not show up all at the same time, so it doesn't pack I-5.
Yeah, and for those that aren't familiar, uh, uh, sites of comparable scale would, would, are mostly concentrated on the East Coast. Or you might have heard of Spruce Meadows in Canada, but they're all, they, they have, um, they, they have weather limitations, I would say. Um, but one of the, one of the big holes in the industry right now is that there aren't any major international-scale, um, comprehensive venues on the West Coast. Uh, most folks, if they, if you want to go to the really high-end uh, facilities, you, you wind up going to the East Coast, although there are a few nicer facilities.
We also just now today got
Which also has weather problems.
A support letter from the United States Equestrian Federation in recognition of this need. It's one of the largest organizations in the country on horses.
Right. So, uh, in case you're not familiar with the equestrian industry, uh, we're, I'm going to be quoting a study from twenty seventeen. There were about seven-point-two million horses in the U.S. at the time. Um, most horses were concentrated in Texas, California, and Florida. That's where Wellington is, uh, Florida. Um, and about twenty-eight percent of the U.S. horse-owning population, uh, had an annual income over a hundred thousand. Um, so it, they're, they're slightly more affluent individuals. Um, and thirty-eight percent of participants were under the age of eighteen.
So it's a growing young, younger sport.
Right. Um, other more interesting statistics, one-point-three percent of households own, in the U.S. owned horses at the time. Um, but what's more interesting, uh, I think, is that thirty-one percent of households actually include a horse enthusiast. That's about forty million folks. Um, for, that means for each owner, there's about twenty-two others that's, uh, spectate or participate in some way in equal events. So there's a big, uh, there's a big, uh, outsized impact for the number of folks that are actually directly um, competing on the horses. So there's, there's about a hundred.
About a million jobs, fifty billion in direct economics.
Right.
So the market's pretty large.
Right.
This is the big thing, is the high attendance. You, you want me to go?
Well, I can, I can do this. So to give you an idea of, of the size of some of these events, these, these are the larger events. Um, in Wellington, it, they draw about two-hundred fifty, a little over, uh, they draw over two-hundred fifty thousand people for their two-week winter festival, which equates to about a hundred twenty-two thousand bed nights for that event. Um, and the FEI World Equestrian Games, which comes around once every four years, draws about five-hundred thousand plus spectators.
And that, the FEI World Games, we are set up to get that, and we will have those at some point.
Right.
Um, and then Spruce Meadows, eighty thousand. We also have eventing things, it'll, about eighty thousand people will show up, we'll have one or two of those. But on average, we'll have about five thousand people on site is what we would carry. And these hotels, when they come for these events, are going to go to the surrounding communities, because when I, when we competed, you'd have one or two events, and then you have time off. And you go to the wineries, you go to your Cottage Grove cute home, hometown. You go to the hotels, and in these big events, we'll fill up the hotels from Portland down to, uh, Medford to the coast.
Well.
Mostly.
Well, yeah, uh, we'll fill up the local hotels.
Um, so your, your revenues there will be pretty high. Why don't we go to?
So we're, we're really designing this to try to be the best venue on the West Coast. Um, we, we discovered that in order to make, for this to make economic sense, we had to go large and be multidisciplinary. Um, one, one, so, so, a lot, a lot of the, uh, current venues, they're small. They're, they only specialize in one individual sport. They're limited.
But we're also very supportive of the small venues.
Right, we're also supportive of them, but.
We, we want more venues, not less.
Right, the economics work out better if you can continue to operate all the time.
We'll also do more than equestrian. Um, we had a car that won at Pebble Beach. We would do concourse de elegance, conferences, international meeting spaces, uh, investment conferences, things of that nature.
I should also mention, this site does include an airstrip. Um, we're not doing anything uh, new with that. It's, it's pre-existing, but it is there. Um.
We get asked a lot about the costs. And we're looking at a new model that's more dynamic pricing. Um, you've got to serve the high end, but you also have the average equestrian has to also be able to afford it. And we've got a lot of different revenue streams. We're used to running businesses when we go on. It's like.
Yeah. So this is our current working timeline. Uh, we're, we are currently in the phase of, in the property purchase and planning.
We actually are in a signed contract, and we're in escrow.
We're in escrow right now.
And it's, it's, a lot of it's Drew and Quinn's money, and then also investors. Um, but we didn't want to close on the property till we had approval, and we'll talk about it.
Right, and I, I should, yeah. The nice thing about Douglas County in particular, you want us to stay on the screen?
Yeah, the, the, because towards the end of the year, we'll start the longer-term planning. We'll reach out to all the communities and the equestrians. What do they want? It'll take six months to a year. Construction should be done late twenty-twenty-four, uh, completed twenty-twenty-five. There is no public subsidies. We're not asking for any variances, no concessions. Um, it's all private investor money.
So one, one of the hard.
Let me talk to you.
Yeah, uh, one, one of the hardest things to do when you're looking for a location for something, for a venue, is just finding the site.
And getting someone to sell to you, if you want me to talk about that.
Yeah, you can talk about this.
What Drew didn't mention, my background, besides in financials, in land use planning, I have a degree in economics. And I also, don't hold this against me. I worked for a lot of cities and city county, county planning metro. And I worked for LCDC reviewing land use plans. I may have even reviewed Cottage Grove's land use plans. So if you'd asked me if I'd read the ordinances, yes. And Oregon has a very unique land use process, while beneficial to us, is also very frustrating. Is finding a site that works under the goals is very, 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 very difficult. Douglas County, though, because we looked everywhere, from Washington to California, and we had several fault starts. Douglas County has the most affordable, easiest, clearest, uh, process.
And most importantly for our partners, the, uh, most certainty involved in the, in the process.
This site, Drew, can you do the, the, uh, is, is two and a half miles along I-5?
Can you see my mouse?
We don't know if that works.
Yes, okay, yeah.
That's two and a half mile frontage. This is the exit Cottage Grove is to the north. Uh, Oakland and southern, or south of us. When you see that map, that's almost three thousand acres. The long strip is a, is an errant, is an errant.
I've, I've got, hold on, I've got, I've got.
But let, let me explain. In the land use process, this site is already approved for a destination resort. But it was approved for two-acre lots. And we're going back through the process, and we're not subdividing.
Well, it was, it was approved for two-hundred half-acre lots.
Yes, that's right. He's right.
It's smaller than actually.
We're not subdividing at all. We also requested a public hearing. We didn't have to do this in the Douglas County process, but it provided more certainty. But we also wanted to get out and let people know and find out what concerns are. What happens, it's going to be scheduled for the April fifth. We've submitted an application. It's submitted for the April fifteenth Douglas County Planning Commission. The odds are they will approve it, because it's already been approved before. It already went through Luba, all those things. We meet all the requirements, no concessions, no variances, no public subsidies. And the, but the Douglas County Planning Commission can do is say, okay, we approve Pegasus with, with conditions, like, okay, you say you can get water, prove it. Okay, then, and the odds are they do that. Then what happens? We wait for the appeal period, because someone could appeal you. And then we go into the planning process, and then the, the final stage is administrative. It no longer goes back to the public process.
Right, so by, by having the public process all upfront, you can address concerns upfront before. You know, it's, it's a lot easier to make corrections before you've actually laid the foundation.
So what we're, what we're getting from people, like Drain just now tonight passed a motion to tell, ask the Douglas County to support this application.
Right. Right, but once it's done, it's, it's very certain. It's, it can go forward, which is what's nice about Oregon's land use process.
So let's go ahead and the next one.
So this is a more, a bit of, uh, more detailed breakdown of what we expect the site might look like. It's not, it's not the final plans, uh, by any means, but what, you want to talk about this?
Um, you've got the mouse. This is, you want to show them the intersection? This is a, a visitor's wine and, and experience center. Over, over up above is Polo Fields, uh, down below veterinary. This shows our road system. The big area up here is the resort area up on the hills. We had to learn that Douglas County has mountains. It has hills and valleys.
We actually initially didn't look at Douglas County, because it looked a little bit too mountainous.
But we found a site that worked. Um, the area in the middle in the red is where the arenas are going. It's a box canyon, so it doesn't dominate the landscape. Our neighbors don't see it. Some of these other areas that you see on here, the red slashed areas are where proposed vineyard sites are. Uh, we're restoring Wheeler Canyon. Um, it was contentious before. We're going to restore this salmon string.
Well, in, in the prior version, under the Heaven's Gate approval, they, they almost went forward with putting a reservoir in Wheeler Canyon.
We're not going to do that. And then we're going to put a venting to the north, combined driving and a reservoir. So that's the initial plan.
Right, and then the black strip, that's the current exist, pre-existing airstrip, which we're not modifying.
Speaking of airports, many people come into Eugene, they could use the Cottage Grove Airport. The, met, many equestrians, um, fly in in their own plane and fly their horses in. And what happens over time, they will come back on a reoccurring basis, which means the equestrian industry is going to grow. Um, in this entire Douglas County, Cottage Grove, Lane County, on a, on a, and it will fill your hotels, it will pay your transit tax, it will bring your tourists to downtown Cottage Grove.
Yeah, so
we're also concerned about, this is mapping, environmental mapping. We meet all the standards. They told us where we could go. That shows a star where it is. The beige color there is, we're not in winter um, wow, big game habitat. We're restoring the stream they indicated. Um, so we meet all the environmental goal, five goals. Go ahead, Drew. We also have to be self-contained, which means you have to provide our own water, sewer, uh, power.
And this, once again, goes back to the Destination Resort Siting rules.
That shows where the airstrip is. From the top, it's gorgeous.
Uh, it's, it's almost a mile long.
We also, unlike some venues, we do not want to be the living room for the community. We want our visitors to go to your communities. That's why we have a twenty-four-seven gate. We don't want subdivisions next to us.
Well, I, I want to, I want to be clear, we, one of, one of the things we looked at is that I've seen with, with some other venues, especially if, if they didn't, if cost was no object, um, they, they would, they would try, they would kind of wipe out the local local business at the expense of their own margins. Um, so we're, we're not planning on doing that. We're not, we're not trying to be exclusive, but if we try to be everything to everybody, we, we could wipe some people out for not really a lot of gain. Um, so we'd, what we'd rather do is focus on what we do best, and then have the industry, have businesses grow up, grow around us.
Not around us, in the, in, within the urban growth boundaries.
Right, not, not immediately around us.
Equestrian sports take a lot of land. We also had a, we have a traffic study. Drew, you did the, you have a traffic study.
Well, one of the unique things about that, that is actually a picture, a drawn photo we took of the intersection at Metz Hill Road there. Um, it's probably one of the least utilized, uh, full interchanges on I-5. Um, there's, there's a daily traffic count in the bottom right of this, of this panel there. Um, that shows that. So we, we, we found, we found from our traffic say that, I mean, we, we, even at, even our peak, uh, there might be some left, maybe some left turn refuges or something.
That's on Metz Hill, but the freeway, no impact.
Right, the freeway, there's no impacts. Um, and you want to talk about the surrounding uses?
Surrounding uses. Surrounding uses are mainly all, um, large lot ranching and stuff, which is very compatible with us and we're well compatible with them. We basically control the interchange, so we can control the uses and, uh, things of that nature. But it's the one most underutilized, um, intersection. And just so I emphasize, it's not like an Oregon, Oregon State game where you never wanna go on the damn freeway. Um, if you're farther north. In our business, people come and stay for a week and traffic is sporadic.
Right, it's, it's more spread out.
Right.
You'll have, you'll have people coming and going over the course of a week or two weeks.
So is that it?
Uh, almost, uh, we, we've gotta say who we are.
Okay.
Um, so our, uh, our team have worked together for about ten years. Um, and you want, you wanted to be the one to go over this and.
You wanna go to the next one? Real, real quick, I wanna point out, first of all, Linda Royer, she's our lead architect. Um, she's also been a planner in Oregon, but she's done equestrian venues around the world. Also locally Hunter Creek, some in San Francisco. She's also known for the Nike campus. Uh, and she rides horses. The other one that, that you might all know is Mary Arndstand. Um, she did Salasian Lodge, Heathman Hotel, Broken Top, the Ashen Springs Hotel and opened up the Allison Inn and Spa. But more importantly, she gets along with a lot of people. She is in the visitor organizations. She volunteered Oregon, she's on the Oregon Shakespeare Festival, Crater Lake Park Trust, the Ben Visitor Center. She also was on Oregon Tourism Commission pointed by the governor. She did the Oregon Sports Authority, Association for Public Progress, Northwest Natural Gas, Portland Development Commission. And many visitor organization. This will be her capstone project. Um, she knows tourism inside and out and resorts inside and out. Um, the rest of us, you know, there's a polo guy, there's this guy and his brother and me and why don't you go to the next page? We also have the environmental engineer, Steve Gorman. Doug White used to work for LCDC and Douglas County. We have architects from McKenzie in Portland and Larry does our, uh, financial stuff. But I think that's the end of it.
Yeah, that's.
We're trying to be quick cuz I know you wanna get out of there. But we are asking for a letter of support, similar that we just got from Drain tonight. Um, so why don't we cut that off?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can.
You have questions? Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, I read this lengthy report and so thank you for providing all that information. Um, but I don't recall exactly the number of, of employees year round. My question is, gets to, who do you intend to be hiring? Do you intend to bring in, uh? Some higher paying jobs from outside talent initially? Are you looking to hire restaurant staff and everything locally? Uh, how do you intend to operate your hiring practices in this area?
Well, we're gonna bring in a hiring manager, first of all. But a lot of the people right now are very specialized that are on our team already. But the number of jobs on this report was five, four hundred and twenty-three. It's really like five hundred, two hundred and fifty part-time, full-time. Now, many of your low-end jobs such as grooms and stuff like that come with the riders. So we're gonna be doing the resort jobs and higher end jobs.
So so, some staff travels with the competitors.
Right, um. We're gonna be paying more than market wages because we're gonna operate twenty, uh, twelve months out of the year. These are not part-time restaurant jobs. And the clientele that we're using, we need some pretty good employees. One of the things that will attract people is we're gonna allow our employees to have a horse on site. Which will attract a lot of people. So, but we'll have an HR person. We've got someone in mind to do that. But again, the restaurants and things of that nature won't come until late twenty-four, twenty-five. I don't know if that, did that answer it?
Well, when thinking about the impact on the community, uh, you know, one of the things that we talk about here sometime is connecting businesses. Uh, with opportunity for our students and taking a, a keen interest in that. Especially if there are highly skilled, uh, positions needed, you know, sometimes having an employer, uh, local. Gives some hope and opportunity for something to shoot for and maybe some, uh, apprenticeship opportunities as well. So, yeah, you can speak to that.
Let, let's talk about, uh, educational. Um, my parents were both educators and, and a professor. And my grandfather was superintendent of schools. And we wanna work quite closely with the local schools through not only, um, in the polo, we have to have people to play with. But, you know, we wanna have internships, uh, uh, and also through the hedge fund. We fund companies and, and, and Drew was actually an intern at one time and so have I been. So we do wanna provide that type of training and opportunities. You, you can address that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there will be a lot of employment opportunities. We, we are now, we are many years out from being fully complete. Um, so for the first year, uh, basically for the entirety of twenty twenty-one, it'll basically just be a small core team of planners. And, and who's, who we've already introduced you to on our team. Um, but going forward after that, once we actually break ground, there will be a significant number of construction jobs. Um, and then after that.
A lot of local opportunities, but the bigger impacts, not just our, our.
Specifics.
Our, our jobs are not the only impact. The, the five hundred jobs, great, and many of those will come from local and, and, and training stuff. But the people that come for these, like I was just talking this morning with someone. That, uh, some of these high-end writers like the Bloombergs, the Gates, the, and those people, they want a place to come to here on the West Coast. So it's gonna be your other equestrians that also come up, the tax shops, the other businesses. That will come and locate near us and then also the tourist is not your day tripper wine person. Right, they stick, they spend a lot of money locally, so you're gonna see a lot more, it's your.
A lot of, a lot, a lot of the, a lot of the employment opportunities, we're expecting not necessarily to come directly from the resort itself. But by, by the virtue of it being a destination, we expect there to be a lot of indirect employment opportunities that will. Come about as a result of us being where we are, um, if that, if that makes sense. Um, like there will need to be support businesses and things like that. And then people will also just wanna probably live near, near where we are. Kinda like in Wellington.
Not, not like.
Well, not like, not like Wellington.
Well, he has a question, but.
Yes?
Any more questions? Mr. Stannett?
Yeah, um, you guys mentioned, uh, non-equestrian events in the presentation. Um, do you see that being something that's kind of, that's quite secondary? Or is it, will those be frequent? Do you think there, there'll be lots of opportunities there? Does the market kinda dictate how that's gonna go?
Our primary thing is equestrian. Okay, that's what we're set up to do. But the resort, the way we've got it laid out, you'll even have, enjoy being there if you didn't come in on a horse. There will be things, we have experience, for example, in major car shows around the world. That's a non-equestrian. I think there will be other major events such as investment conferences. Why should they go to Sun Valley when they can come here? You might have a, a John Deere or a tractor conference or something. We have very large arenas. That, I mean, they hold just in the arena area, not the floor, seventy-five hundred people or more. And we have, are required to have convention rooms, which we will have also. But the primary thing and focus is equestrian. The other things are secondary to fill in. So that we have a, a great stream of income.
Right.
Does that answer? So the primary thing's equestrian will fill in with the other.
Thank you.
Ms. Soulsby?
Are, are you, um, considering an event center where you could host weddings or anything of that type?
We, we could. Except what we don't wanna do is take away from other businesses. You know, it, it's got, we, we can host four or five events at one time, equestrian. And, and there will be wedding requests.
I mean, one, one of the unique things about, about the topography of this site. Is that you've got a lot of little discreet kind of valleys peppered all throughout the site, which makes it possible to actually host multiple different kinds of events at once. If you want to, if you're able to.
But, but we also have to be careful because of biohazards for horses. It could shut us down for thirty days, so we have to be careful.
Yeah, that's actually something that happened recently. The, uh, WEC actually just got, the World of Question Games actually just got.
Not, no, world.
Not, no, sorry.
World, world of equestrian. So to answer your question, yes, but our expectation, there'll be the much larger events, not the, the more smaller weddings. We don't wanna interfere on, and this is a key thing. We don't wanna interfere with local venues and, and local vet wedding things.
I, I mean, okay, and there, there, there's actually a real reason for that because, I mean, one, one of the primary issues that a lot of large venues have. Or even just small venues is that they, they suffer from kind of a lack of focus, if that makes sense. Usually what, what'll happen is somebody will develop an equestrian center kind of as an auxiliary to some other kind of. Um, business or maybe as a sub, uh, sub-development and eventually the horses get pushed out. What we're doing is kind of the opposite. The horses are the focus and then there are auxiliary businesses around that central focus. Um, which, yeah, so i- I don't know if that made sense, makes sense.
Did we answer your question?
You did, and I myself, I'm very excited and thank you for your presentation. It was fantastic.
Well, it's, it's gone better than some of our very early presentations.
Any questions, comments? Does anybody wanna make a motion for a letter of support or not, Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I remove that the city council, um, uh, present a, uh, letter of support.
My second.
Before I call a question, I think Mr. Carl wanted to say something.
It, it shows that four hundred and twenty-three jobs are gonna be created. Uh, two hundred and forty-six full-time jobs. Is that going to provide insurance or any kind of benefits for these people? And what kind of wage are they looking at making?
Yes, um, most of those will be higher end jobs and that will, e- even though insurance costs a lot of money, it's necessary.
Okay, prevent turnover.
And, and we want employees that are gonna stay there given the level that we want. Do we have the salary ranges for you? No, we don't. Uh, but it will be, we're, we've gotta be on an international scale. We also have to have people that can speak multiple languages in many cases. And we will have benefits with that, such, such as health and, and dental. I want it myself, okay? And.
Right, we, so we don't have specifics, although it would be very strange if we didn't, uh, if that makes sense.
I, I, and I understand that. It, it was mentioned upon, you know, uh, a question was asked. Basically, how many people you gonna bring in on your own and how many from the local area? How many people you're looking at hiring from the local area? Because what you're talking about. Does not sound like you're gonna be hiring for the local area. It sounds like you're going to be bringing in your own people from outside the area.
Depend, it depends on which staff you're talking about. We will have to hire locally for a lot of the positions.
Can, can you, can you break down that number as to how many local are you really trying to bring in? And how many are you gonna be bringing in from outside the area?
We can't answer that question at this time.
I could dig into the economic report and see what the.
We can't really answer that question.
Not with any certainty, but I, it, it's not, it's, we're, we're definitely not importing all these jobs from just bring, bringing people from somewhere else. Preferably, we would prefer to hire local where we can, um, where the skill.
But they have to, where they have the skills. I mean, uh, uh.
I mean, we, uh, over the long term, uh, we do plan on offering things like training programs. Um, and then also partnering with the local community, but those, those are more longer-term programs. Which means that, uh, uh, i- i- it, it depends. I can't give you necessarily exact figures, but I mean.
You know, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I understand that you cannot give me the, the numbers because those numbers, they're, they're not there. And, but you know, but let's be realistic about what we're looking at. If you're saying, okay, two hundred and forty-six full-time jobs. And how many of those people you really think are gonna be there in this area that you're gonna be able to fulfill those positions with? So you're really only looking at maybe fifty percent of that to actually fulfill what you're looking at right now.
So what's your point?
I don't feel that the jobs are gonna be there that you're looking at. You're, you're selling this high thing and hearing you're both commenting and you guys talking and trying to sell this presentation. I don't even think you're both are on the same page and I don't understand how anyone can actually.
Point of order.
Okay, we need to get, we need to get. So.
You need to, just Drew and I argue all day long.
Yeah, I mean, part of it.
How we work.
Mr. Carl, you need to wrap it up.
It, my question is, how many of the local jobs you really think are gonna come out of this area?
Well, again, we can't answer that question.
I, I, it's uncertain at this time. I mean.
There will be some, no matter what, and there'll be a lot of local jobs. What if we didn't come?
Okay, question's answered. Let's move on.
I understand it. Thank you, thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We got a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Closed. Okay.
Thank you. If you ever have questions, you've got our phone numbers, feel free to call.
Right.
Thank you. Item B, Aprils to school and Fillmore Stormwater Outfall Project Issue. Mr. Bradzby.
No, we're on the land exchange nine B.
Oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong.
Don't start over again.
Yeah, item B, land exchange, South Seventh and Fillmore. Mr. Bradzby, I got the right person. It's past bedtime. Are you still on, Mr. Bradzby?
Oh, boy. Okay, Brad, uh, Ron, where are you? Okay, well, you have before you, we'll go ahead and go through this and, and hopefully he can get on while I'm, I'm going to run for you. And we have this land exchange and, um. Basically, we've been contacted by the church there, the Resurrection Life Church that's on the corner of Sixth and Fillmore. And, um, they're doing some other work on selling a piece or portion of their property to an adjacent property owner. And at the time they asked it, would we be interested in fixing, um, basically the issue that has arisen on the corner of Seventh. And Fillmore where, uh, they have property that is owned. Um, out in where the right-of-way should be if it was a perfectly ninety-degree intersection of, uh, L intersection of South Seventh and Fillmore. Um, currently, the intersection is actually a curved shape, um, and the corner curves through there. It is not a ninety-degree angle on the outside of that, that property. Um, and they've asked whether we would be interested in doing a curved approach there, um, and fixing that. So that we don't have to move all of our sidewalks, um, and or buy a bunch of property. Um, and our infrastructure that's there. So basically, they designed the curve to be on the outside of the sidewalk. So the sidewalk and the street light would be in the right-of-way. And the remaining portion of that ninety-degree would be then vacated back to them or stay with them. Um, and they would give us the cross-hatched green pieces on exhibit B. And we would then vacate the corner of that right-of-way that exists, that is currently right-of-way of ours to them. Um, to square up that and take care of that little problem that's there. Otherwise, we would be acquiring the entire ninety-degree L shape there to make that full intersection. Um, in addition to, in order to maintain our right-of-way and our property. If you've been there and visited that site, you'll know there's kind of a retaining wall on the backside of the sidewalk there on a portion of that seventh. Street and it kinda goes into Fillmore a little bit as it drops back down, but, um, and there's a, a drive approach. Apparently approximately, um, where the word west is on that green has hatched area on the sidewalk. So that's basically what's before you. Are you interested in us moving forward? We don't really need anything other than, yeah. Go ahead and go and do all the paperwork and put everything together because we don't have, we'd have to go through the process. And we'd have to do a vacation process and we'd have to do the documentation and all the paperwork and everything to bring back to officially do this. But if you're interested in the curved approach, then we will move forward with that.
Thank you, Richard.
Anything to add?
So the, the only warning is during the vacation process, we, we will need to make sure. When we vacate it, it, uh, as our city attorney pointed out, we'll need to make sure. Truly goes back to the church because when you vacate it, state law says fifty percent each way. So we'll have to do a little investigation, but I don't see any problem.
I like it.
Mr. Fleck? Yeah, this, uh, makes total sense given the configuration of the road, so I moved. Yeah, this, uh, makes total sense given the configuration of the road. So I move that the staff, uh, city council authorize staff to proceed with the proposed land exchange as shown on exhibit B.
Second.
Got a motion with a second, a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll make sure I know how to run my phone better next meeting.
So, um, on my report, I just want to report that we now will have a vacancy on the budget committee. And thank you for everyone and for the, the comments and stuff on the award. It was a great, a great honor and, um, I, I really appreciate it. So, from El Cog.
Thank you. Okay, we have no attorney. I seen her log on and she's not here anymore. So, um, we are adjourned.